Good evening and welcome to the November 7, 2016 meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Chairman, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Beale?
Here.
Ms. Ogless?
Mr. Fellowes?
Here.
Mr. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Beale will be a voting member. I mean Saunders. You're right. Ms. Saunders will be a voting member this evening. With Ogless's absence, thank you. This board is a moving target. Next item is approval of minutes from the October 11, 2016 meeting. Motion to approve. They have a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous with one extension. All right. The next item, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing to receive comment on an amendment to the Town of Scarborough official zoning map to rezone the parcel located at 79 Muzzy Road identified as map R-55 lot 18 as shown on the Town Assessors map from the General Business District, B3, and Village Residential, VR2, to Town and Village Center, TVC3. Jay?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I think the title pretty well explains it. These are two parcels that, at least on our tax maps, abut each other. One property is completely TVC3 and the other parcel is, there's a proposal by the owner to rezone the property from B3, from a combination of B3 and VR2, to all TVC3. And they have a development scenario that was proposed as part of the application as well. And I believe they're here to speak to it as well if you're so inclined with that. Turn it back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to come on up, Rocky?
Good evening. Rocky Risbrough, Risbrough Properties LLC. It's currently owned by the Carrier family. It's about 11 acres in size. It is actually two parcels of land, but it's been in the Carrier family's possession for quite some time. We identified the parcel came for sale and we identified that it was certainly something we were very interested in. And in doing our research, we recognized that there were three zones that actually came together on the property. There was about, they're all about three acres apiece in size. We have 3.8 acres of B3, 3.72 acres of TVC3, and 3.56 acres of VR2. So what we'd like to do is have the Town Council change this zone so that it's all one zone, it's all TVC3, which would allow us to then move forward through the planning process with the Planning Board to develop an apartment project, which is what we have in mind for the parcel. We think it's highest and best use. So we're really here tonight just to hopefully get a favorable opinion for the Town Council. It has been before the Council once. I would add that we actually had a, we had a neighborhood meeting. We did a mail-out to everybody within 500 feet, did about 35 invitations to a public meeting, and had about 22 people show up, which was really a good turnout in my experience. And had some good conversation, good feedback from neighbors. Didn't have any negative feedback about our concept for the TVC3 zone and our proposed apartment project. So we're hoping that the Planning Board could support this zone change and happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. Before we move to any board discussion, this is a public hearing. Before I open it up, just like to remind folks, if you'd like to come on up, just give your name and address and limit your comments to five minutes or less. With that, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any takers? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Moving right along. Is there any board discussion? Any questions or comments on this? Nick? Ron? No? Robyn?
I'm just wondering who the, the abutters, can you talk generally about the abutters? Are they commercial, residential?
I actually have another, somewhat helpful. This is just off the Town's website. So this is the zoning map off the Town's website. And basically what we're showing is we have some directed abut that is in the B3 zone. We have some land behind us that is in the VR2 zone. And we have land that directly abuts, this is the TVC3 zone. And B3. So, and across the street we have some B3. And then further behind us, we have some industrial. So we felt that it was a good transition zone. There was some discussion when we met with the Long Range Planning Committee about, you know, how did we, how did we wind up with three zones on one piece of property, which is something they generally try to avoid when the rezoning was done. But the discussion was at the time, you know, they were trying to match zones as closely as they could, but felt that the TVC3 zone really did make sense to unify this area. So I'm not sure if I answered your question, but B3 directly beside us.
Any residential in the area?
There is residential. This is, Honin Road exists.
That's residential?
This is residential, while the front is actually TVC3, and then the back piece is VR2. So it does, it does abut a short dead-end street. One of the reasons that I don't think we have a lot of neighborhood opposition at this point, assuming that this can go through, is that changing this to TVC3 would allow us to do an apartment project and we can preserve quite a, quite a piece of buffer area off the end of Honin Road. The neighbors didn't really like the idea of extending Honin Road.
Did you include the Honin Road residents in your outreach?
Yes. And that, we had good turnout from that.
Talia?
Yes.
Thank you. Roger?
No, I have no questions. I think it makes sense to me.
Thanks. Yeah, I don't really have much to add. I guess I see this on Long Range Planning Committee a while back and as Mr. Risbrough alludes to, I mean, sometimes there are these sort of odd little pieces where things don't quite seem to make sense today. And so in one respect, it's a little bit of cleanup, which is sometimes easier to do when you have a specific sort of project in mind and it seems to make sense, given the location and everything else. And happy to hear about the neighborhood outreach and the response to that and appreciate the update. But beyond that, unless there are any other comments, I think I'm hearing unanimously favorable opinion that we will be passing along to the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, number five. Four Southgate LLC requests a site plan review for Southgate Road, Assessors map U-37, lot four. Jay?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Let's see, this is a piece of property that board members will probably recall was before you, not too long ago, for a zoning change. It was actually previously zoned in the B3 and the applicant proposed to change it to the industrial district for the purpose that we're looking at tonight, which is the construction of a, sort of a warehousing slash contractors' office space, utility space type building. Again, it's within the industrial district. I will note that the applicant had submitted an application to staff through our pre-application review process. So they received one round of staff comments and were able to make some plan adjustments accordingly as part of that process. And given the proximity of the property to the Scarborough Marsh, we did ask for wetland delineation to, peer review to be done, and that was completed and found to be satisfactory. At this point, you know, you have a round of staff comments as well as comments from Wittern and Kern. I think some of the sort of most pressing issues, if you will, would be sort of a remaining discussion regarding landscaping. As staff was sort of taking a second look at this, there was, and really sort of looking at the existing conditions on site, the board might want to consider additional landscaping sort of along the northerly property line between the parking fields and those properties that abut Route 1 to sort of shield the parking field and/or overhead garage doors from potentially being viewed. Town engineer and Wittern Kern also identified some tweaks to the stormwater modeling that they'd like to see accomplished as part of the project moving forward, particularly around sort of modeling, to be sure that things are being modeled correctly, culvert sizing, and just also ensure that the amount of disturbance is being adequately shown. I'm sure Angela can speak in more detail on those if there's questions there. And I guess the last item, I just note in staff comments, is the applicant is requesting a waiver from photometrics plan being submitted. We do have cut sheets of the proposed lights, which are full cutoff lights, which meet our typical expectations. I guess the one thing we'd want to probably be sure of is that they do cast at least enough light to ensure that there will be, be able to have safe movement from the parking field to the building. And so I don't know if the applicant's been able to get a handle on the cut sheet. Sometimes they have a sort of a casting model, so to speak, shows you how far. But I think, other than that, like I said, there's a few other comments in there, but those are sort of the highlights. So with that, I turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jay. And I will turn over to Mr. Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sean Frank. I'm a civil engineer with Sibago Technics. With me tonight is Ray Labonte of Four Southgate Road LLC, the applicant associated with the project. As Jay stated, I think the board saw this in association with the zone change request. We worked through with the city council, Town Council, excuse me. And I think we're pretty much in terms of online, in terms of what the overall proposal had been at that point in time. If I could just walk over real quick. Just to get everyone oriented, this is our Southgate Road in this location here, Route 1 would be right up and through here. I'm sorry, can everybody see all right? And what we propose is a driveway to come in. There are some wetlands obviously on site. Our total wetland impact was actually 12,000 square feet associated with the proposed driveway in this part of the parking area down through here, to a proposed parking area to service basically a 10,000 square foot building, just under 10,000 square feet. The intent of this is commercial condominiums, five units, if you will, for electrical contractors, plumbers, that sort of folks is who are kind of anticipating. Actually, if you go down to the corner, right where it takes that hard corner, it's three Southgate down through there, right? It's three Southgate, right? And it's the exact same type of proposal we're talking about down from there, where they have individual units, they're actually commercial condominiums at the end of the day. And I'm sorry, this did get updated on me before. I didn't, I had to bring out an updated plan. One of the comments had been for a sidewalk connecting the back doors along and back into the parking, and certainly we will have that. There had been a discussion as well about losing this pavement area down through here. We'll be happy to lose that. This will be the snow storage on either side of the dumpster area. We have water and sewers right here. There's actually a manhole right here. We will extend water into service of site. Domestic will be off from a meter pit, and we will have sprinkler system as well within here. We do have, I think we have a dozen lights here right now. They are full cutoff features. I think part of the comments have been losing some along the back, especially it seems that, you know, these are really just for emergency access. We'd be happy to do that. They also talked about losing this one through here. We will have one over each one of the man doors coming in through here. We do think that is sufficient. Again, I think if you look at the users here, we're not anticipating customers, if you will. We really anticipate this being pretty much folks that work here, very limited type of public access to it and those types of things. There is good buffering along the back of this building here. It is a little limited right now. It has been recently cut down through it and is with just really long grass. We aren't proposing any additional landscaping in through here. We kind of concentrated, if you will, the entrance coming in from Route 1, excuse me, from Southgate and along the access driveway here as well. You know, certainly we have some site visibility in through here, but really it's, you know, the back of their buildings, if you will, facing us. So I don't see a whole lot. You really won't see us very much from Route 1. There are the existing businesses, if you will, along Route 1. Is that actually that strip mall, the real estate place and insurance company? Again, this is some good vegetation in through here. So I think we're really talking in through here. You know, the other part is we did have a sewer easement along that northerly property line, which actually services the existing building on Route 1 here and actually allows it to go all the way over to Southgate. I believe the other folks are tied into that as well. Again, from a staff standpoint, that was really, the only thought we had was in terms of, you know, I think we can certainly lose some lighting and work with staff if the Planning Board's comfortable with that. We would just, like I say, just as soon as not be adding additional landscaping. From the building perspective itself, it's going to be basically an off-white, you know, earth tones, if you will, for the building, a very light tan. We will have some darker features in terms of just the breaking up the elevation in terms of the top and the bottom, with some stonework on the bottom and a ribbon along the top in terms of typically. The roof, all drains to the rear, and what we have here is a stone drip edge, a roof drip edge to provide the treatment to the runoff of the wetlands. We also have a stone treat within this location here, basically allowing the runoff from the parking lot to be treated within that unit prior to outletting into the wetlands. We are in receipt of the staff review comments associated with stormwater. We certainly feel comfortable in terms of addressing those with staff and, you know, getting revised plans back to them. We would, obviously it is in November, if the board's comfortable, we certainly would appreciate a conditional approval on allowing us to work through staff with these remaining issues if the board's comfortable with that. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would conclude my presentation and certainly hopefully between me and Mr. Labonte, but do have us to answer the board's questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have the opportunity for a public comment on this item. If there's anyone who'd like to come on up? All right. We'll move on then. Robyn, do you have anything?
I do. First, I'd like to commend the applicant on working with staff on pre-application process. I think it really helps to get the process moving more forward, more proactively. It's good to see your permits in hand. That's something that's really, really great. And the fact that you've already been through one round of staff comments and it's limited really to one page now, I think it's really exemplary. I would also like to commend staff for doing, asking for the wetland delineation and knowing that the developer was pretty much in alignment with the wetland peer review, I think speaks volumes that it lets, you know, both developers know that in Scarborough, we're serious about wetland delineation and protection and that you're, you've been very diligent with your work. So I would ask staff if they're comfortable with the trajectory of the project moving forward. And so, yeah, Angela or Jay, do you feel pretty comfortable that you're on the path? Because what I'm hearing is conditional approval is being requested based on input, working with staff.
Yeah, I think the only item sort of left from my perspective that I'd like to hear the board chime in on a little bit more would be the consideration of the landscaping, if the board's comfortable without any additional landscaping, or if there's a modest amount that might be sought, sort of maybe on the backside of the swale.
So the suggestion for the staggered row of shrubs and evergreen trees is really what the staff is going for there?
That's probably, you know, from sort of the planning perspective. I'll let Angela speak too, if there's any major issues for stormwater erosion, sedimentation controls that need to still be addressed.
I think as far as stormwater, we worked, like you said, back and forth with the applicant. And I think between, well, I tried to summarize Wittern Kern's, I guess, a little bit, was we worked with them, and I think we're pretty close. I think there's some minor tweaking with the model we talked about, but it's definitely doable and it won't change the site.
Right. And actually that, and again, obviously we received these last week. I really hate to come in and say, here, we see we've answered these questions, but obviously, again, we've been working with them and certainly appreciate their input. And, you know, I do actually think that we probably have the majority of the items pretty well addressed at this point in time, or at least addressed in our standpoint, so we can get them back to staff so they can take a look at them.
I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger?
Thanks. I actually went down and took a look at the site. First of all, I have no problem with what you have planned there for the building and everything like that. I'm just kind of curious, there's a lot of fragmites on that property. Are you gonna, are those gonna stay there or?
I don't know what, you know. I know, and it's an invasive species, you know, and I'm actually, I'm working on another project with oil associates, as a matter of fact, trying to rid some of these fragmites from here. That was never a point of conversation, to be perfectly honest with you. We always, because from our standpoint, we always minimize what we're gonna do in the wetlands and kind of it's a handoff type of thing. So I guess at this point in time, I guess they are planning on staying there.
I know there was a big effort a number of years ago to clear up the marsh.
There were, indeed. I remember there was a lot of work down along Route 1. I know in trying to get more salt water onto the other side of Route 1, as I remember right, trying to work in terms of getting rid of those. And I do, like I say, I do know on some other projects that, you know.
Okay. I have nothing else.
All right. Thanks, Roger. Bron?
Yeah, just a couple of minor things. I've been reading the notes of the staff and, you know, we have a draft motion in front of us, and it seems that most of the issues have been resolved. That's what I'm hearing anyway. But I don't see anything about snow removal. Has that been resolved?
It has. When we added this park, and again, it was actually so that someone could turn around and pull back out of here, and, you know, Jay has a good point, there's plenty of room here for vehicles to park. So once we lose this, there's no curb on this side, we'll actually be able to push the snow, if you will, right to the end of the parking lot on either side of the dumpster. And we should be sufficient. I think we were showing it more up and through here, and I think Jay's question was, you know, are we actually gonna get it up there, which was a very valid point. So I do think we have adequate locations for the snow storage at the end of the parking lot.
Thank you. And the other issue is to make sure that there is, since you're asking for some sort of deviancy or waiver about the lighting, that there is sufficient lighting on the property.
And certainly I appreciate that. And again, our thought is the one over every door in the front, I think we stick with that, work with staff in terms of maybe going halves on the back, so there's not so much lighting in the back where it's darker and losing the one on the side. But with the ones in the front, we're pretty comfortable that, you know, again, especially in terms of the uses we're talking about there, that we'll have adequate lighting for what we're talking about.
And the last issue, which is what Jay was talking about, what is the reluctance to have any additional landscaping?
As always, it's just budget, you know. I just think in terms of looking at, you know, the total budget, in terms of where we were versus where we thought we were gonna be, you know, Ray's just trying to minimize, obviously.
Sure. Come on up.
Thank you very much. My name is Ray Labonte of Four Southgate LLC. I'd like to talk to you about the landscaping. Take the microphone, please. As Sean alluded to earlier, Route 1 is out here and you have Max's Deli over in here, and you've got the insurance center and the little doctor's office here, and Southgate is coming down here. When you look between the buildings, there's the parking lot for Max that's over in here and it butts the property line. And then you've got this open area of high grasses and small trees along this area. So right now, when you're looking down, you're looking at this commercial building and it's all stacks, vents, and different things. At least when you'll be looking down now, you'll see the front of the building lit. I think it's gonna be much more appealing. We have done quite a bit of landscaping up in this area, and the total excavation cost has been quite high. So I was looking and considering something along these lines, how extensive, I'm not sure I, what we'd be looking at, what Jay was proposing or thinking of. But like I say, right now, you're looking down, you're looking straight down into this commercial building here, and it's not a very nice site. And we plan on cleaning all this up and maintaining it and having it look kind of nice, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thanks, sir. Thanks. Yeah, I'm okay with the request for the waiver on the photometric plan. I'm assuming you guys can work that out with staff. The last part of it is, I'll just throw my hat in on the landscaping, which is, my personal feeling is if you're in an industrial zone, I'm not sure the necessity for a very nice landscaping plan is really there. That's just my personal opinion of it, so that's pretty much all I have on this.
Corey?
Thanks. You all set, Nick?
I'm all set.
Corey, if I may?
Yes, Robyn?
Regarding the landscaping, I guess, is it an option maybe, Jay or the applicant, to, instead of adding more landscaping, could we maximize, or, I'm sorry, minimize the amount of disturbance to the natural areas? Is that possible?
To reduce the impact that's currently proposed, or?
You know, I'm thinking specifically of, you know, that stormwater management clause that I like to use a lot that says, can we minimize or maintain as much natural buffer and landscaping as possible? Is that counterproductive, I guess, to what you're trying to get from the applicant, Jay?
Nope, not necessarily. I guess just so long as, you know, the standard typically is where there are industrial type uses or overhead doors, the idea is to try to shield those from the public ways.
Right.
That's typically what the standards call for, and as we just sort of heard, that this could be somewhat visible from Route 1. So if what's existing is sufficient, that's fine. If the board's comfortable with that, then certainly that would be.
Okay.
Yeah, Angela, please.
I mean, looking at minimizing, I think because of the amount of wetlands that they're disturbing, I think they're minimizing as much as they can for the site. I don't think they're probably gonna be, probably reluctant to reduce parking or take away some building, things like that. So I would say for what they need, for the building, I'm assuming, and I'm seeing nodding, that they've really probably already minimized because they've gone through permitting for the wetland impacts they're talking about. So I don't know how much more they would want to do there.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm not undermining what staff has already suggested as far as the shrubs and trees, but is that minimizing the impacts could also be taken into account?
And just for what it's worth, I think when my comment was about the landscaping, sort of thinking about a few maybe evergreen trees planted sort of on the backside of the swale, sort of closer to the parking lot, so not sort of into the wetlands, but really that backside of that swale where there's already disturbance. Not, I don't think, you know, wasn't sort of my thought to do a, you know, a full, you know, full screening, but at least just maybe breaking it up with a few well-placed trees is all.
And one other question, Corey, if I may, is regarding the lighting waiver. Is the waiver that you're asking for to reduce the amount of lighting?
It was more the photometrics plan associated with it, and I'll be honest with you, I mean, typically if I don't have pole-mounted lights, then I typically do ask for the photometrics. Usually when you have the pole-mounted lights, especially based upon the height and how you're located within the parking, that seems to have the bigger impact, especially from an off-site perspective. And again, especially with these, with the LEDs, with the wall packs, with the full cutoffs and just directed down, we were, I was just asking.
So you're not, you're not asking for a waiver from installing the full cutoffs?
Correct.
It's just on doing a photometric analysis?
An actual photometric analysis, correct.
How does staff feel about that?
Well, I guess the question is, you know, is the board comfortable if the applicants demonstrate that there'll be enough, inadequate lighting to provide safe access from the parking field over to the building? Sometimes the cut fixtures or the manufacturer specs will have sort of diagrams that show sort of light distribution, and it may not be shown on a plan, but, you know, what they can get is a cut sheet of the fixture, which we have.
Yep.
But then also a cut sheet that shows that distribution, that shows, you know, yeah, it goes out 40 feet or goes out 10 feet. And I think that's just sort of what we know. Generally, it's conceptual. Generally, it's conceptually, to me, it makes sense that, yeah, there's probably gonna be enough lighting, but without the evidence, that's for the board to determine if you're, you're comfortable with what you're hearing or how you want to move forward with it.
And if you're interested in my perspective, the, this is an area for migratory birds, so, you know, I'm not sure if that warrants a need, more of a need to do the photometrics or less of a need to do the photometrics, because of, you know, the migratory bird, you know, you generally try to keep the lighting lower so that it doesn't impact their, their sort of migratory.
And again, and I'm not, I'll be the first, I certainly wasn't looking at it from that particular perspective, but that's something was at least ours in terms of why we were just talking wall packs and not talking pole-mounted lightings, was just in terms of adding light to the site.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk to Robin about that. The lighting that we're proposing is called dark sky lighting.
Yep.
So, it doesn't cast a hue up high and everything, keeps it down low, and based on the building that I'm in now at Three Southgate, we have those type of lights, and the way that the light casts, it forces it out, it's LED, so, that lighting will come off the building and cast out in this area in here. It's going to come out about like this.
But Jay's got, I mean, it's certainly the catalogs, I can certainly get that information and at least provide that to staff, and, and again, if, obviously, if they're still uncomfortable, we'd be, you know, we'd be more than happy to come back to the board if we need to, you know, for that one item, if staff doesn't ever come.
I wanted to talk briefly also about the shrubbery issue with the grasses. I had this bush hogged so that they could get in there and do some engineering.
We appreciate it.
And this was all tall grasses out in here, and these get up over four feet, four to five feet high. It's all wild grass all through here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have something else, Roger?
Yeah, just a question on the lighting. If, if we agree with what they want to do, and I tend to agree with what they, what they want to do, but say they determine that the lighting is not sufficient and they want to add more lighting, then they would have to come back to planning, right? Okay.
Yeah, the way, right now, as you've seen, we did draft a, a motion for the board to consider, and essentially what it says is, address all staff comments, and one of staff comments is to ensure that there's adequate lighting to the parking field, so I think, again, intrinsically, it seems to make sense that based on the light fixtures they're proposing, what staff seem with other applications, that there probably will be enough light cast once we see that cut sheet, but if there isn't, then we would have a discussion. If we can't come to a resolution to address that condition, then it would ultimately come back to this board to, to resolve, but, at this point, staff's pretty comfortable that this is not an issue that would hold up the project in a meaningful way.
We appreciate it. Again, if the board's comfortable with that condition of approval, certainly we are. I mean, we're certainly comfortable with work with staff through that, and again, obviously, the worst-case scenario is we come back to you folks on that one item.
All right, thank you. Roger?
Just one last thing, and I'm not in love with fragmites, so, but when I was out there looking at the site, fragmites get too tall.
Yes, true.
And I think that, that's what you're referring to when you're talking about the tall grass, I believe, right? I'm just wondering, Jay, if you put some fir trees out there, they may, you may not even see the fir trees because the fragmites are pretty tall, and I think they stay around all year long, if I'm not mistaken, so, that's, you know.
Robin, are you? I wanted to make sure you're.
Yes, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Well, we've already touched, pretty much touched on the, the hot-button items here. We're in pretty good shape overall. I am okay with the waiver for the full photometric plan, I think, given, given the fact that, you know, staff's willing to sort of work, work with the applicant to, to look at the, look at the information and assess things, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, and, you know, if it had to come back to us, it would come back to us, but I think, given that we're talking about full cutoff fixtures and, you know, the nature of the site, I'm anticipating that should not be an issue. On the landscaping and buffering, I certainly do appreciate staff's raising that as a, as a concern and something to think about. For me, I think, given the fact that, you know, we're not talking about, you know, real direct frontage on Route One, and that there is some naturally occurring, pretty tall, rapidly growing vegetation out there, and the fact that the building itself, to the extent that it can be seen, I think is, as the owner pointed out, is, is an improvement over what you can see from Route One now, and I think as industrial buildings go, it's fairly attractive little building, and so it'll certainly be an improvement, and I think that's always a, you know, question to ask ourselves on things like this where we're sort of on the fence, you know, is it at least incrementally better than what's there now, so, and then we alluded to stormwater and the fact that staff will continue to work with the applicant on, on those sort of technical details, but again, seems like things are, are well on track, and I think, you know, to the extent that, to the extent that, you know, in the unlikely event that there are any issues that sort of come back that cannot be resolved with staff, obviously, we can deal with that as it comes. So, with that, I would like to put a draft motion, or actually, it would be just a motion forward. I move to approve the application of For Southgate LLC, represented by Sebago Technics under Chapter 405 zoning ordinance and Chapter 405B site plan review ordinance with the following findings, waiver, and conditions. Findings as stated. One waiver, waive the requirement for a full photometric plan, provided the applicant deliver evidence to staff that adequate lighting will be provided to ensure safe access between the parking spaces and the building. Two conditions, number one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall A, provide revised plans to address comments and planning department staff, excluding landscaping and woodwork and current memorandums, plans to be reviewed and approved by the planning department. B, pay the traffic impact fees. C, conduct a pre-construction meeting in coordination with the senior planner. The meeting shall incorporate, include appropriate town staff, the developer and the site and general contractor, among any others deemed necessary. And condition number two, prior to the issuance of the signed permit, the final signed design shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous?
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Item number six, Leighton Farm LLC requests the second amendment subdivision, second amended subdivision plan review for Leighton Farm subdivision, phases two through five, Elmwood Avenue, Assessor's Map R-37, Lot 1B and 3A. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's just noted, this is a amended subdivision plan for a conservation subdivision that is principally in the R-2 district. The property is also encumbered by a bunch of resource protection land, which are ultimately going to be part of the open space for the project. This project dates back to 2014 with the board, at which time it was approved as a 97-lot residential subdivision. At that time, I think most boards, most, most board members will recall, there was an FAA tower on-site, which required some, actually, consideration by the Board of Appeals even at that time to allow the roadway to get by it. Well, subsequent to, in the last two years, the FAA and the developer have worked together and now have removed the tower and the easement, and as the developer informed the board back in the day, that once that had been accomplished, they would seek some additional lots in that area, so, this proposal is a request for two additional lots in the area, and the area is sort of the lots closest to the intersection of Leighton Farm Road and Green Acres Avenue, so, it, the proposal doesn't change the infrastructure layout in any meaningful way, other than some new stubs to lots. There are some other minor adjustments to some lot lines as well, I think as the applicant's gone through and developed some of their, started development, realized they could do a little lot reconfiguration, and then the other minor component to this is a minor adjustment to the phasing line, and I'm sure the applicant's engineer will describe that for you in more detail than I can. So, I think at that, at this point, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Chair. And I will turn it back to Mr. Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. I'm Sean Frank with Sebago Technics. With me tonight is Vincent Maietta of Leighton Farm LLC. As Jay did a wonderful recap, by the way, so I'll try to be brief. Exactly, as you all may recall, was part of the conservation subdivision design, we do the net residential area calculations, we do a conventional layout, and then we do a conservation subdivision design, and it was kind of that negotiation process, if you will, from the, between us and the planning board, where in terms of the net residential allowed a certain number, the conventional layout, in terms of what we were thinking about, had some more lots, and I think we all agreed that 99 was the maximum number of lots that this parcel could handle. So, we went through and got Phase One approved, which is Owen Way, which is pretty well constructed at this point in time, then came back and got Phases Two through Five approved to the board, and at that time, again, the issue still had been the FAA tower and constructing the roadway within the 140 feet, and with two lots that were within that 140 feet, and as Jay said, we certainly discussed at that point where the board is, you know, once the FAA tower was down, we'd be back for those two lots. And just to get everyone oriented, this is Elmwood. Owens is in this location here, it's actually started on the Phase Two. The change, as Jay was saying, was basically adding a couple of lots right up through here where the old tower basically was. This had been the driveway coming down through here for the tower, and the tower had been basically right in this general area. Two lots, we still have a small wetland area here that'll be part of the open space. As you may recall, there's a large area down through here along the Nunnsuch, it's actually going to be conveyed to the town of Scarborough, if it hasn't already. Again, these are kind of smaller lots because of the conservation subdivision design, and what we were finding in Phase One is, we had a little angle to these lots, rather than being perpendicular to the road, it just made them a little difficult from a construction standpoint, so, we figured we'd take advantage as part of this and go through and try to come up with more perpendicular lot lines, if you will, throughout the phasing, so that's kind of led to some of the, the adjustment within the lot lines, and we actually are asking to go down to this intersection, if you will, now, as part of Phase Two. We are originally stopped right through here, but just thought we might as well come down and get this piece as well, grab these two lots, if you will, part of this phase of construction. Stormwater is all the same along those lines, and the utilities. We have received staff comments, and certainly we'll work with them in terms of, they're absolutely right to revise the, the plans to depict the stubs in the correct locations based upon those revised lot lines, and certainly we'll work with the engineer in terms of where the stockpile areas will be. It certainly will be anticipated that, yes, Leighton Farm Road will be, you know, the main access road, construction access road, at least initially here, as we go forward with future phases, so, you know, we'll just have to, obviously, make the, the future homeowners aware of that, that, you know, obviously, there's a number of lots that'll be constructed further down through there, and, you know, that's just gonna be, and we'll just have to work with them as we go through that. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I conclude my presentation, and it's, again, certainly between me and Mr. Maietta, we'd be happy to answer any questions of the board may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is another item where we have the opportunity for a public comment, if anyone out there is interested. All right, I don't see anyone, so, how about you, Ron?
No, I think this is pretty clear. I mean, that tower was an issue. The only comment I would have is that the, what staff has advised the applicant that the road can't be accepted until everything is all done and completed, and just, you know, be aware of that, is that correct? Other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward, just adding to, to what's already in existence and trying to keep the neighbors happy as you build the building roads.
Thanks, Ron. Nick?
I don't have a whole lot extra to add here either. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Roger?
I don't have much to add either. I'm just kind of curious, just one thing, when, early on, when you were here doing one of the presentations, there was a concern by Mr. Gruber, one of the abutters, and about the Leighton, Leighton Road, Leighton Farms Road going in there next to his property. I assume that's been all resolved?
Yeah, and again, as I recall, and I certainly, I'm glad you mentioned that, though, because to be perfectly honest with you, I hadn't recalled. I think, remember, we first went, gone, had gone in there and cut the trees, and he thought there'd been some drainage issues associated with that, but I told him, obviously, as we started working that road, that the road was actually lower than his land, so I thought, you know, we got the culverts in there and that type of thing, that we'd actually, I certainly didn't see how we could be damming any water on his property, it could only lead to, you know, help facilitate, you know, the, the movement of the stormwater as it currently was existing, so, I have not heard from him in quite some time, I.
We assume he's happy.
Okay, I have nothing else.
Sure. I could probably add to that.
Sure, Angela.
If you don't mind. I have heard from Mr. Gruber, and I've actually met Mr. Maietta out on the site with, with Mr. Gruber, and we've kind of worked through, I think the two of them are working together and accommodating, I think, his concerns, I would say, and I have not heard back since then, since we had our plan in place on how to, I guess, alleviate some of his concerns, and I haven't heard anything negative beyond that.
Yeah, and again, I apologize, I didn't realize that had happened. To be perfectly honest with you.
Thanks. I'm sorry. My name's Vincent Maietta, I'm the, the owner of Leighton Farms. I've had numerous wonderful conversations with him. He's, he's just an amazing neighbor. He's obviously concerned, as, as he mentioned, Angela, about a few things, and we've, we've tried to take care of all those, and he's just been great. So, we're excited to be up there, and I, I don't think we have any more issues to deal with, but if we do, we certainly would be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Robin?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo staff comments regarding the need for construction sequence plan. What parts are under construction right now?
Owens Way has actually been constructed down to the Hammerhead right here, and the homes are all being constructed on that. Right now, they're actually in the process of, they built the, the stormwater management ponds down in this area, and they've been working on the infrastructure associated with basically bringing Leighton Farm over and the connection of Owen Farm back, Owens Way back to the intersection.
Sir, is there a third-party inspector on-site?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, okay. Or is the contractor doing their own inspections, their own?
No, no, certainly not. Not the town. It's a site location project, obviously, as well, so DEP's been involved.
I don't have anything further, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I don't really have much to add either. Point's been, been made and acknowledged, construction access and the town accepting the road, so, don't need to belabor that. Yeah, I certainly would have taken the over on how long it would take to have the FAA agree to take that tower down, so congratulations on that. Didn't expect to see this one so soon, but, glad to see that things are, are progressing, and with that, I will make a motion for approval. I move to approve the application of Leighton Farm LLC for the second amended subdivision plan of the Leighton Farm subdivision, represented by Sebago Technics. The proposed amendment enables the addition of two residential lots, modifies the existing phase plan, and reconfigures some of the existing lot boundaries. Based on the review of the application materials, I find that the proposal is consistent with the zoning requirements for the property, and that the additional lots are within the allowed total residential density of the parent parcel. As part of the approval, payment of increased traffic assessment fees and recreational contribution fees will be required to mitigate impacts of the new lots. This approval recognizes that the existing conditions from the board approval dated June 22, 2015, remain in effect. As a condition of approval for this amendment, and prior to releasing the signed MYLR for recording, the applicant shall, one, revise the plan notes, and two, provide a revised construction set to address staff comments related to utility connections, construction activities, and access. That's the motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Again, thank you very much.
All right, Corey? Could I ask Mr. Maietta a question before you leave? I'm just kind of curious about the phasing. Is it proceeding quicker than you anticipated when you first saw it, or?
Yes, sir, it is. Yeah, we're very excited. Scarborough, of course, you know, is a very exciting town to develop in, and we're excited to say it's far ahead of where we expected to be.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Item number- Item number seven, Valentine Development requests site plan review for Eastern Village subdivision, lot 118, South Village, assessor's map R72, rather, lot 139. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, so this parcel is part of the larger Eastern Village project, which is a residential, principally residential development that was approved for 195 units. This lot, which is shown on the approved subdivision plan as lot 118, was always identified to be for multifamily development, which the applicant is now before you with. Pardon me. As part of staff's comments, we really tried to break up, sort of, looking at this project, starting sort of with the global subdivision, and how this project fits in with that, and then, then the board is also asked to really look at the specific site plan elements within the boundaries of this. So, to that end, really speaking of the overall more global subdivision elements, staff still has some questions with regards to how the proposal fits in with the overall state permitting, particularly at the DEP level, and actually I'll ask Angela in a few moments to sort of speak to stormwater details, as well as DOT permitting. Part of the question there is, as my notes indicate, the lot was originally identified to be developed with 28 units back in, I think this project received approval in 2008. There were 28 units identified for the parcel. Subsequent to '08, the town has adopted residential zoning factor, or I'm sorry, residential density factors, in which smaller units can be counted as either half a unit or two-thirds of a unit. So, the applicant's actually seeking of those 28 units to really develop 53 units, principally all one-bedroom, which count as half unit, and I think there were two two-bedroom, if I recall correctly. So, just, again, understanding how that unit count modifies any traffic impacts that might be associated with what was sort of counted for the overall subdivision, and really how that interplays with the overall street network in town, intersections and the such. I guess the other issue we flagged is that there are some inconsistencies with the approved space and bulk standards as part of the subdivision. Again, this project is in the town and neighborhood development district, and really what that allows is for space and bulk standards to really be a negotiated process, so to speak. There's a lot of flexibilities provided with in this zone. And so, while those space and bulk standards are codified on the subdivision plan, they're not hard and fast, so if there are items that need to be adjusted, such as staff's suggested lot area per family, that could be looked at, provided that, you know, the applicant wants to do that, and the board's so inclined. And then, again, sort of last item on sort of the global subdivision issue with regards to affordable housing. Again, this project was approved for 195 units, that's total units. Again, we've talked about how there's these density factors that can be incorporated. But of those 195, 13 of the units were to be affordable, and of which six were to be developed in this phase of the project. And so, again, just, I think it'd be good just to have a conversation, be sure that's still the intent, and that's moving forward, which, you know, staff doesn't see as an issue, but at least worthy of a conversation. So, that's sort of the issues, again, as we speak to the larger subdivision. And then, as I noted, once we start to dial in just on the site proper, then we begin to look at the site plan review element specifically. Staff sort of has a host of comments, but I'll really focus on sort of the bigger ones. I think a lot of these are fairly easy to resolve, but I think a couple of them, again, need to be, might want to be addressed with regards to potentially taking a look at the access sort of into the site, and maybe this is more of a subdivision slash site plan discussion, really sort of the intersection where Eastern Road and, it's a Federal Way, or?
Yes.
Federal Way, which is the main access into the site, where the southerly access into this lot 118, how that all comes together. They're slightly offset, and there's sort of a lot of action happening there between vehicle movement as well as the eastern trail, so just being sure that that's really looked at, and actually staff is hoping to maybe have a conversation with the applicant and maybe in between this meeting and a future meeting. I guess the other sort of major or bigger design issue would be around the width of the parallel parking spaces. On-street parking has always been considered as part of this project, completely expected and anticipated. Just in looking at the seven feet that are being proposed, we just asked the applicant to really demonstrate the functionality of those, to be sure that they're going to operate adequately. So, I think those are sort of the highlight items, if you will. Again, we have some other comments that I'm sure the applicant and staff could work through pretty easily, but again, as I did say, I would like to have Angela take a few moments and just speak to what the stormwater issues are. So, with that, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'll turn it to Angela.
Sure, it is. Thank you.
I have gone back and forth a few times talking about stormwater with Steve Bushy from Stantec, the design engineer, and I think it's noted in staff comments, we discussed the increase in peak flow rate from the site. And I know, looking back at, if you look back at the last permit, which was really 2012, you're just showing this modest increase, but I think the board should look at it more localized at, looking back at pre-development, which we typically would. I'm not expecting to get back to pre-development, but I think it's a bigger conversation to say, all these little incremental increases add up. And I know I've talked to Steve a little bit about where this discharges, which is the culvert, and it should be noted that has provided me with some information about how that culvert was sized. So, it was in an earlier phase of the project that was replaced to accommodate the flooding issues that was overtopping, apparently, the eastern road. So, he's showing calculations that show that it does not flood out or flood over that roadway. However, there's other factors that we need to look at as far as the velocity that that would go through, and the erosion, possible erosion on the downstream side of that, which basically enters into the marsh, which is obviously one of the town's priority natural resources. So, it's something that I think locally we need to look at, and as you look at these numbers and what is actually leaving the site. So, that's all I just wanted to kind of highlight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's helpful. I just wanted, before we get into the board discussion, I wanted to just briefly point out to the board that given where the applicant is with DEP permitting and DOT permitting, that, obviously, and as well as some of these other details, we're not at the point yet where we'll be considering any approvals on this tonight, but there's still plenty to discuss, and plenty for us to provide feedback and input on. And before I hand off to the applicant, we do have the opportunity, once again, for a public comment, if there's anyone so inclined. Once again, I don't see anyone, so. Actually, I'll provide that opportunity again, with the applicant giving his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm the owner of Valentine Development. I just want to speak to some of the staff comments that Angela and Jay have talked about, and give this board a chance to understand kind of the process that Eastern Village has evolved from when it got approved back in 2007 to where we are today. Steve Bushy from Stantec's my engineer, and he can speak more to the engineering issues, but, you know, Eastern Village was always envisioned to not be a meeting the standards type of development for the town. We got many exceptions in, with respect to bulk and space, with respect to road geometries. We don't, we don't support lining up intersections. We purposely put those at a non-90-degree area. We've got a two-acre site here that we're proposing 53 multifamily units on, and we've got comments in here that talk about speed bumps. I'm sure the board's aware, but just west of the turnpike here, a two-acre lot, and this isn't even a two-acre lot, will support one housing unit. We've got 53 here, so, speed bumps, you know, it's just, it just seems like a bit much. But nevertheless, it's comments, and, you know, I want to make sure that the current board understands that Eastern Village was granted many exceptions when it got unanimous approval back in 2007, and mostly with road geometries as well as bulk and space and whatnot. The other thing that was mentioned as far as parking spaces, it's our belief that cars will be getting smaller and lighter, for one reason, and that is that they have to. So, we're more than comfortable with where we're at with the design, and we'd like to get it built, get going on the construction of it as soon as possible. We originally came in and saw the town three years ago with a slightly different version. I didn't quite like it as much as I wanted to, so I held off and spent the next couple years really trying to figure out what made the most sense over here, and this is what we have, and we, we obviously feel very strongly about it, what its success will be. And we came to you about eight months ago with this project, and left with the feeling that, you know, you were happy with what you saw, and that you looked forward to seeing us return. We submitted a pre-application review back in August, and got a couple pages of comments, and then did the best we could to address those, given the fact that, I think Jay may have been on vacation then, and there was some vacation issues there, and possibly all of the comments may have not come to us. But at the same time, we then submitted for the approval we're seeking tonight, and we got seven pages of comments, so it was a little bit frustrating, and that's why I wanted to make sure that I addressed the board and gave kind of a brief history about what Eastern Village is, and that back in 2007, the train kind of left the station with those allowances, exceptions to the standards, being that the standards that the town uses, I believe, are conventional. This is not a conventional project. And, and that, you know, nine years later, eight amendments later, thousands of feet of road later, many families living in the neighborhood later, we'd like to stay to the same type of development pattern that we started with. And this certainly, we believe, facilitates that, and we look forward to discussing it more further with you, and hopefully get these issues resolved so we can get under construction, since everybody else in town is planning apartments all over the place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might just, I just want to just touch on the, on the pre-application process. We'll note that we did receive a partial application in August, to which we provided some comments, but they were cursory, since the application wasn't complete at that time. We didn't do a complete and thorough review, but we did provide a cursory round of comments. So, I do agree that those were sort of intermittent, but that is, that's the rationale that went behind that, so.
Thank you. Steve Bushy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Bushy with Stantec, provided the engineering here, and Mr. Anderson has gone through a little bit, but what I'd like to do is walk you through our site plan, our layout plan, a little rendering, gives you a little bit of a graphic to get some understanding, and maybe I can touch upon a few of the points on the drainage and some of the permitting pieces and so forth that have come through with the staff comments. Moving forward, we would expect we'll be resubmitting to a full package, addressing all of the comments that we have received from both staff and the peer review team, so I think we'll be able to address these things, and frankly, a lot of them, I think, are some pieces that probably with a sit-down with staff, as Jay had alluded to, will probably go a long ways to maybe buttoning some things up. But as Mr. Anderson had discussed, the theme here behind the project, it's a 1.76-acre parcel, so it's not a real big area, and the theme has always been, within Eastern Village, as you drive down through there, that it is far more tight than the standard or the traditional approach. And I think there's some, the idea behind that has been to get something with some density, some tightness. What it results in, many might argue, would be a tight-knit neighborhood, one that would promote more pedestrian friendliness with walking, bicycling, and that type of thing, and probably less promotion of, you know, fast through traffic of the neighborhood and so forth. So, when we talk about some of the dimensional pieces that have taken place, at least with this layout, have to kind of have that set of glasses on, I suppose, to a certain extent of understanding, okay, what is this type of living area going to be like? So, we've got 53 units, 51 of which are going to be one-bedroom units, and then there are two two-bedroom units. And we've got a number of buildings here, and I'll quickly go down through them. Buildings here, and I don't recall off the top of my head A, B, C, however they're labeled here, but these first two units here with a connection would have eight units each in them, and then five units in this building, five units in this building, 12 units over in this far building here, and then nine units in this building, and then six more in this building. Now, staff had made a very good comment that Carrie and I talked about, in fact, today, which was a phasing approach, and right now, we hadn't necessarily shown you that this project would be a phased project, and it would be built all at one, all at once, was our thinking. And perhaps in this next round of plan submissions, we will be giving you a phasing plan. I won't go specifically into what that is yet, we haven't probably figured that exactly out, but it's a good comment from staff about approaching the project now as a phased-type design. Right now, project that has been constructed as part of the Eastern Village piece is the Federal Way out to Eastern Road, and then Richard's Way here. Before I neglect it here, this is the subdivision plan, so just to give you some sense of the main entrance here, we're on this side of the project. This is the area that I'm showing here in red that has generally been constructed out and has occupied dwellings generally, and making its way out to Eastern Road, so the Eastern Road here, over to Blackpoint Road, and so our lot of interest is this lot 118 right in here. Again, 1.76 acres. We're going to talk about in a little bit the pond that has been constructed, so this is the large new pond, as it's been referenced in oh-so-many submissions going back to 2006, and realize how many submissions have been made from 2006 through 2012, both locally with the town as well as the DEP. But this is the large stormwater management pond that basically serves the bulk of the property for water quality treatment, as well as the flood control issues. There is another pond, the Valentine Pond, over in this area here, I'm not sure exactly where it is, that, that serves the project, principally the area that's already been constructed. So, the new pond is a larger piece that will serve the bulk of the remaining property to be developed. Carrie, just made mention, the phasing for the project and the subdivision, the most recently approved eighth amended subdivision plan, there's basically nine phases, and this is, was 3B for this lot development, so you can see where we're still picking away at things. So, the development here includes a new access point onto Richard's Way here and here, and then a new driveway here, and to what staff's comments have discussed is this intersection here with the alignment of not only this driveway as an intersection to this piece of constructed road, but its alignment with what would be a reconstructed component of the Eastern Road. Eastern Road today is a straight piece of road here, and we're looking at bringing that and more or less teeing it up with this new piece, so there'll be some reconstruction that will take place, and that's always been part of the plans, per se, so that Eastern Road would not be a straight piece as it is today. We've got narrower driveways and access drives here, as Carrie has alluded to, so 20-foot wide, two-way directional, but on a number of the locations here, as I'm pointing out, we have some parallel spaces as well, and those parallel spaces are currently measuring at about roughly seven foot wide, 20 to 22 foot long. So, they're a little narrow, but that is the goal of the project. We've got some other things going on with respect to the sidewalks. We've got sidewalks effectively all throughout and around all of the structures. Got some parallel spaces along this side, and then the perpendicular spaces generally on the outside. on the outside of, in the northern side of the project here. We've got 82 parking spaces throughout, so more perpendicular spaces down here, few more over on the far easterly side also. Got some areas for turnaround and the staff has talked about and requested evidence through some auto-turn traffic diagrams that would show how single-unit vehicles, in particular ambulance, would be able to have access through here and we will provide that information as part of our subsequent submission here to show how circulation does work with vehicles and it will work for the emergency vehicles. The layout contemplates the placement of solid waste trash enclosures with some building, smaller building covered spaces here and here as well as down out behind this building. We've got yard areas in this particular plan and showing a landscaping. I think I counted them out, 57, 58 trees to be planted throughout the area. The pattern along Richard's Way is consistent with what were the originally approved plans going back eight or nine years ago. Similarly, some plantings along this piece of connection to the Eastern Trail, which will ultimately be built out, out along the Eastern Road, which is not there today because the Eastern Road basically is acting as the trail, so to speak. And that is part of this project is to construct that Eastern Trail piece, as I'm pointing out here. We've got utilities that are all stubbed out within Federal and Richard's Way for water, sewer, storm drainage and natural gas, underground power are all there and will be extended into the, to the layout here to serve each one of these individual buildings. These will be partially slab-on-grade with partial basements. They won't be a full basement for the entire building space. Each of these building spaces, I believe, footprint-wise are roughly 1,700 square feet on the smaller areas to as much as 3,500, 3,800 square feet for the larger rectangular buildings. Total square footage with each one of these buildings, though, goes up to roughly 5,000 square feet, so they're multi-story buildings. Architects' rendering shows you how the building styles will look here with a multi-level gabled-in buildings, pitched roofs, clambered siding. Staff has asked a few questions about color patterns and so forth, so we'll address those things, but we'll give more information. We had provided some building elevations and floor plans, preliminary floor plans, but the building elevations were shown as part of our submission package. To one question in regards to architecture, there's a small post office building here which is kind of a pet project of Kerry's. He had seen a similar type building to serve a development in another state and he's got the goal of trying to replicate that type of building approach within this space. It's going to be a little post office piece and there were some comments in regards to the signage there, so we'd like to work through those things because it has got some high character that he'd like to be able to bring to the, to the project. So we're hopeful, if folks want to see that tonight, Kerry can present that, we'll work through that with, with staff, though, as to the layout. So this particular rendering is looking from basically the west towards Richard's Way, so these were the front units with that connection piece and there is a walk-through to the sidewalk piece here to the center courtyard, the buildings in the background and then the building over towards the far easterly side. This building will contain the ADA units as well. Site plan, here's that ADA, building containing the ADA units and we have our ADA spaces over here, so our ADA route would be along this sidewalk area into that doorway at the front of the building. So drainage-wise, we have stormwater management system that's going to include closed collection system, catch basins, pipe and so forth. Staff has made a comment with regard to our grading, our grading for the project and we're doing a little non-traditional type approach. Traditionally, in a street access drive configuration, you'd have catch basins off along a curb line. And in our case, we've decided to put the catch basins more or less in the middle of the driveways. We're going to have a low spot, as an example, right in this little four-way intersection. Ultimately, that pipe network, network will come out to Richard's Way and connect to the existing drainage system that has been installed. So I pointed out earlier where the large wet pond is. And that wet pond, going back to 2006, is original design capacity included certainly this lot as well as quite a bit of other area within the development. Back in 2012, though, there was a couple of changes that were made and some of the area of the development were rerouted and actually put to the Ballantine Pond and at that time, there was some new permitting that was done with not only the town but the DEP. The new pond, though, its design was never changed, probably no specific reason behind that and ultimately it became an oversized pond because some of the, about 11 acres of development area were taken away and redirected from originally being thought to be conveyed to that pond, but now that 11 acres, its drainage all goes to the so-called Ballantine Pond. So that left the new pond with some excess capacity and one of the things that we've pointed out, we have a couple of things going on right now with not only the Eastern Village development, but also the Bessie Square development. The Bessie Square development, as you may recall, up on Route 1, that's a smaller piece of property. That was developed and is now currently actually being hopefully completed for the second phase of development at that site, drains to an upper town pond, that's the term we've referenced now, off of Ward Street and it's actually located on this property. It's shown on this map here, the town pond is right here. So Bessie Square being up on Route 1, so slightly off the page here to the north, let's say, and its water generally drains down in this pattern to the town pond. And to one of the questions and comments that the staff has made regarding DEP permitting, we have submitted a modification application to the DEP because the Bessie Square drainage system, we have basically asked for an approval from the department as well as the town for taking the water, the stormwater that still continues to go to the town pond, but the water quality functions of this town pond are going to be transferred to the new pond, since the new pond has plenty of excess capacity to provide water quality benefits for that. So this town pond will remain in place and continue to act for the flood control benefits that it currently has and will continue in the future. And the new pond will then act for not only the Eastern Village, but the Bessie Square Village and that's why we've submitted to DEP for a modification. As far as the Eastern Village is concerned, this project, we're of the feeling that threshold-wise, the amount of impervious area that has been approved as part of the entire development, we're nowhere near that yet because the project hasn't been built out. Now, staff has pointed out that, and we had put in our submission materials, the fact that there has been a 16,000 square foot, roughly a third of an acre increase in impervious that had been calculated for our current lot development. Not sure how that worked out over the course of time, but that's a fairly minor increase and we're still at the threshold numbers of 70% impervious for the lot. We haven't exceeded that, so we're okay in that regard. So we're still feeling like we have lots of capacity remaining and left and have shown that in the numbers and the calculations for the new pond, so that's where we stand with that. I'm feeling we're still going to need to go through some more explanation and discussion with the staff. To Angela's point, her pieces that she and I have talked about include the discharge here from the new pond. We have a new culvert that was installed by the developer here for Eastern Village, fairly substantial investment in the infrastructure for a new culvert going under the Eastern Road. The numbers that have always gone to this project, beginning back in 2006 all the way through ultimately approved multiple times as recent as 2012, had increases in discharge at the Eastern Road. And our more recent calculations have shown the same type of differences between pre- and post-development. I think we just need to continue to walk through the numbers and making sure that Angela, as well as the department, ultimately DEP, are, continue to be happy with the discharge numbers. Angela's made reference to a couple of items such as outflow velocity from that culvert, making sure there is not, are not any conditions or problems with that. I think we're comfortable enough that we'll be able to work through those pieces without any particular issues. So I think we're close, probably still have one more meeting here with staff to make sure we can get through any final additional items, but I think we're close as far as Few other items that staff have mentioned, lighting as an example. So we have 16 light poles that are being proposed throughout the area. We provided a photometric plan from Swayne Lighting. I think we probably want to just get a little bit more information from Swayne for the coverages and to address a few of the staff comments and we will do so, but the lighting fixture here being proposed is in-keeping and consistent with lighting that's already been installed throughout much of the constructed development piece. So staff has raised a few questions about maybe more lighting on the buildings and I think that's a piece that we have to work through with not only the applicant, but the architect as well, to assure what we might have for building on their lighting if it's security, lights over doors or that type of thing. So we will do that. Otherwise, this site really, as Kerry had mentioned, has been part of the development for a long time now and I think the themes of a tighter, somewhat non-traditional layout are part of the vision that he's had for a long time now and so he's looking to continue that. And I think if those of you who have gone down through the Eastern Village and seen what he's done with the level of construction, the level of landscaping and so forth, thus far, I think it's been a pretty good success and I think he's looking to carry that through. So that will conclude my presentation for now and I'm sure we'll have lots of questions to go through.
Thank you. I don't think we have any public comment out there. So we'll begin the board discussion now or continue the board discussion. Just to quickly highlight, sort of reset things, as Jay had mentioned in his intro, there are a couple of items in particular that I think we'll want to hear from board members on in terms of their level of comfort or lack thereof. One being on space and bulk standards, essentially the density. That's item number three, 3-1 in the, in the staff comments. Another being the parking space dimensions and obviously there are a number of other things as well, but I just wanted to flag those. And also just make a brief comment about the, you know, sort of the history of this as Kerry alluded to and Jay spoke about as well. This was, you know, by definition, very different right out of the, right out of the gate and I think, you know, the board at the time, I know the board at the time was very excited about it and I definitely still am. You know, it's been a challenge at times because there have been eight or nine amendments and, you know, some incremental changes here and there and that's fine, but I do think that, you know, sometimes it's helpful to kind of take a step back and sort of look at where we are overall and I would just offer that just because we have made a lot of exceptions and granted a lot of relief in the past, doesn't necessarily mean that it's sort of carte blanche to, to do whatever and continue to make changes and I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to revisit some of these things. We may very well end up agreeing to them and that's, that's fine, but I think as a, as a matter of process, it's perfectly appropriate. So that's my little disclaimer or spiel. Who wants to start off on board discussion? Roger? That looked like a nod.
I would just like to make a comment about your last comment, if I may, because I have followed this project as a citizen very closely, as close, I think, as any citizen could. And I, I think it's a great project and I think it's gone along quite well. Kerry mentioned speed bumps, for instance. I don't recall anything in here about speed bumps.
I don't recall writing anything about speed bumps, but...
I was going to say, when you drive through there, you...
It's a stat comment.
Oh, it is? Okay.
The peer reviewer mentioned something.
When you drive through, you can't go that fast. It's designed not to go that fast, you know? In fact, I, the only, the only criticism I would have with the whole project possibly is that the roads are maybe too narrow in the wintertime when there's snow, because I've been down there in the winter and I think that could be, that could be a problem, you know? So, but the other thing I was going to ask Jay, I know there's been a number of amendments, changes.
Sure.
And since I've been on the board, most of them have been like alignments of lots and, you know, which I consider sort of minor things, you know, changes in, you know, designated certain lots and things like that. And, and I believe this, this location where these are, this we're talking about tonight, that was always part of the original plan, you know, the multi-family place.
Yep, so it was identified for multifamily dwellings.
The only change has been recently in the number of units that can go into these buildings.
Yeah, there's sort of two, two questions, I think, principal questions that need to be looked at. You know, one is the increase in units, but that, that's a function of the, of the town adopting the residential density factors. And that actually was part of a subsequent or maybe even two of the last amendments, particularly when Mr. Anderson received approval to incorporate cottage houses and some other smaller type, single-family dwellings. The other one, the other issue that's on the, on the subdivision note that staff flagged is the notion of, under multifamily, talks about the need for there to be 1,500 square feet of lot area per family, sort of each unit is considered sort of a family function, if you will. So when you divide the number of, the square footage of the lot by 1,500, it actually comes to 51 units. Now, that's not to say that the board and applicant couldn't consider mod, just modifying that space and bulk standard. And I think I even flagged, I think I noted that that space and bulk standard was actually modified, I think with the sixth amendment and went from 2,000 square feet per family to 1,500 square feet per family and it might have been around the time when we started thinking about the residential factors. So as Mr. Fellows just said, the board has looked at these things and sort of reconsidered them and so, you know, it may be appropriate to do so again, but the applicant sort of described for the board, you know, what they're seeking exactly and how that would look. So I hope I answered your questions.
Yeah, basically, you did.
Okay.
I guess my point is, from the very inception of this plan, I, from my perspective, I don't think there's been significant changes to the original plan as it was originally laid out. There's been a number of changes, but they haven't been significant. So I, I think it's important that, I think that developer has basically been following the plan as he originally envisioned it being. And, and I've been through a number, a number of developments like this. This reminds me of preparation down in Florida, what you're trying to do here and I think it's terrific. So that's, that's the only point I was going to make. I just wanted to make, you know, again, as a, as a citizen who's followed this, whatever it's worth. Going back to this situation right now, though, I do have a question about the, the access point going on to Federal. Was there ever any consideration of not having that access there and just having the one, the two on Richard's?
Well, I'm not, I'm not quite sure I understand what you're, what you're asking, but...
The one down there as you...
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we don't want to create a dead end right here. Dead ends are just that, dead. So, we wanted to have the street come in here, street come in here, street come in here, given the nature of what we're trying to do here. One of the reasons why the road geometry is the way that it is, is when we got an easement through Island Fisheries and Wildlife, which owns the, has the fee in the property, the Eastern Road, they would only give it to us, to a, to a certain point. So, that's the reason why we have kind of this alignment that we really didn't want. But given the situation with East, with IF&amp;W only willing to extend that down from Black Point Road so far, we had to work with what we had. But, you know, we do wish that this wasn't, you know, quite the way that it is, because it is tight. But, you know, certainly causes people to slow down, and that's exactly what we want.
Yeah, the reason I ask is I actually went through there, too, on my way down to the other property, so I, and when I went in there, I had to, when I was making the turn, I had to stop because there was another car coming the other way. And that could be because we weren't sure where the roads were and things like that. I just thought if there was any consideration of eliminating that access point, you know?
You're talking about this one right here?
Yeah, just, just because it would be...
Again, it, we really don't want to do it, because what it's going to create is a...
Dead space.
Yeah, I understand. And we're, we're, it's, it's kind of an urban feel to what we're trying to do here, and that would, that would certainly complement it.
Okay, the other, the other question, and I'm purposely staying away from all the ground, groundwater thing, because I know there are other people who want to talk about that. The, the little building you have for the post office. Is, in lieu of that, would you just have regular, those metal mailboxes? Is that what would be there if you didn't have that little...
I'd rather die.
I mean...
I'd rather die.
No, I understand that, but I mean, isn't that what you have throughout the rest of the location?
No, we've got regular, you know, mailbox.
Oh, just the regular mailbox?
Post and a mailbox.
Oh, okay, okay. I don't, I don't know. It's, it's, it's not...
Well, there's, there's a few reasons for this, frankly. One of the, one of the things that's going on, that's big, is online retailing. And there's several apartment projects across the country that never envisioned the amount of online retailing that takes place.
Okay.
And there is several apartment companies that have refused to actually take packages anymore. And of course, tenants are furious. You know, online retailing wasn't nothing twenty years ago, or maybe even ten years ago, but today it's huge. And I also think that that's the future. So, we want to make sure that we've not only got a place where people can pick up their mail undercover, under shelter, but also a place where the FedEx, the UPS, the Postman can go and drop off online retailing packaging. In fact, you may know this, I don't know, but the post office actually travel, works Sundays.
Yeah.
And they work Sundays strictly to handle online retailing, something they've never done in the history of the post office being in business. So, that's how big online retailing is. That's what you can expect for, for flow packaging or packaging flow. And we want to make sure that we have a place for it, we acknowledge it, and afford the opportunity to let it occur without having packages just leaned up against the doors everywhere and, or get stolen or whatnot, so...
When you were here last, too, Kerry, you mentioned charging stations.
Yep.
You thought you might like to have charging stations.
Yep.
Where would they be on there?
Well, we haven't decided that yet. We're still, we're still trying to understand whether we want to have them in some of these areas up by the buildings. But that gets back, again, back to smaller cars.
Yeah.
Which will be the type of demographic we believe we're going to see here. And, you know, bigger cars aren't going to be looking to charge them because there is no, no ability to charge them. They'll only be in a small car function.
Okay. I think, I think that's all I have.
Thanks, Roger. Robin?
Sure. So, I like your vision of the future, as far as, you know, community and village living, accommodating for online shopping, accommodating for electric cars. I guess, you know, I get, what do you, what do you see the future as, as far as development, you know? Like, I was the person on the board asking you if low-impact development would be considered in any of this, in any way, porous pavement. And I know that you've gotten a lot of, I know that this is a, a, a model project to, to sort of, that wasn't meant to meet the standards, but that was meant to be a demonstration or a pilot project. And I think there's a lot of positives to that. I think there, there really is. But I just want to know if the vision for the future incorporates things like low-impact development, or green infrastructure concepts, or, you know, green streets and the like.
This is all permitted right here. This is permitted DOT-wise, and this pond down here was built to take this impervious area. I'm not an engineer, so I can't tell you...
Based on what standard?
I can't tell you what that is.
Yep.
Steve can obviously tell you. But all of the infrastructure throughout here is based on Catch Basin, Point Discharge, and so much of it's been built that without going and ripping up pavement, I don't know how we'd be able to implement it, any of it in the current design. As far as 3B goes, or the multifamily project we've got before you right now, I don't know enough about impervious pavement. I do know that I spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of my money fixing a problem down here that the town had, washing out the road and exposing gas lines. I had other ways I could have run the stormwater, but it seemed like a fairly good compromise between myself and the town to fix a problem. We go that way. And I think right now, with the current infrastructure we've got in place, it seems to me that, given the cost and the size of this, that it would continue to go there. So, this being a different phase, maybe there's some opportunity to do something up there, but I don't know how we do it here, and I don't know how we do it here. I don't know if that's answered your question, but...
Not really. Are you in a floodplain right there?
No, we're not in the floodplain.
You're not in the map floodplain?
No.
Even when they revised them in 2012?
Well, I'm not sure what the floodplain is now. It used to be nine, but these elevations up here are in the twenties existing.
I think actually...
I think actually thirties, thirties.
Yes. I'm not sure what the floodplain is.
So, what natural areas are being maintained? Any at all?
We've got landscape dust alongs. We've got...
Kerry, Kerry, sorry. You need to come back up so they can hear you on the mic.
I, I'm not sure I can answer your question if I didn't answer it before.
Yeah.
I'm certainly willing to try, but again, we have an approved project based on hundreds of thousands of dollars of infrastructure that's been put in to take the development based on the design that we have. So, are you asking if I'm, are you asking me to change something about the...
I'm not.
Okay, I'm not sure what you're asking me.
Okay. Your site, I'm sensing a little tension, I guess?
No.
And I want to just really call it out and say I'm asking really just to understand what part of your site is maintained, natural area? Or is it all being reworked?
Um, I'm not sure if I follow you, but...
Phase five, six, and...
Steve, can you help them out? What's disturbed area there?
The disturbed area is the developed area.
For Eastern Village or just our lot area that we're here?
Um, why don't you point out to me what part is Eastern Village, what you're calling Eastern Village? Because I'm, you know, I'm new to the planning board, so...
Yeah, that's what I kind of sensed, that maybe we ought to step back here and talk about first, the broader picture of Eastern Village, which is basically represented here by this entire subdivision plan. Try then taking the mic. So, Eastern Village really extends all the way around this entire perimeter. And what we've tried to represent and show on this drawing are the various phases, so you kind of see these shaded areas. So, the areas that I mentioned here originally are the areas that have been constructed, more or less, in this area.
Sure.
And most of the houses. What's your total house count right now? You in the fifties?
Yeah, we're in the fifties.
And the, the phase that we're talking about now, Steve?
Three B over in this location.
Right there.
And so, federal has been constructed. And then the pond really is the only place that are currently under construction phase is this area right in here.
Okay. And so, I'm, I'm going to jump around a little bit here to talk to me about the Bessie Square Pond. Wasn't there a requirement that the Bessie Square Pond need to be developed in order to get the O'Reilly's? Is that two different things? Am I mixing two different things?
Those are two different projects, correct.
Okay. All right. So, we can't bring into, we can't talk about that, then? The fact that there needs to be a pond up, up there?
There is a pond up there, but I'm not, I don't know how that functions.
But the way it's permitted is, when we talk about, yes, you're, you've been permitted as of 2007 to move forward, kind of a thing. But Steve, ten years before that in two seven, what were, two thousand, ten years before 2007, 1997, what were the development standards like then? What did we, what did we develop for?
Mostly flood control.
Flood control, exactly. So, when we know better, we do better. And I'm not saying that, you know, to do anything better here, Kerry. I just, I just want to try to understand, I guess, if as we build, we're incorporating sort of new ways of thinking. Like, I like how you're thinking about electric cars, and I love how you're thinking about the online community. But there's also, I think, these other aspects of, of treating the stormwater in place, of understanding that there's groundwater and that there's going to be flooding potential and resiliency issues here to think about, kind of a thing. So, because this has been spread out over almost ten years now, and I guess that, you know, there have been way, you know, I'm looking at your site plan review checklist, there have been a number of waivers that you've been granted, you know, I just, I just want to open the conversation so that it, it's not so tense, kind of a thing, and understand what is currently there and what we can do to, to sort of, to serve all needs. Because I love how you're thinking about, you know, the future and what the future holds, kind of a thing. But I think we need to, to really think about water as a resource instead of a waste byproduct, because we're right on the edge of Scarborough Marsh. And I, and I don't mean to be editorial here, I guess, but, but as part of, and I'm not talking as a citizen, I'm talking about the Scarborough standards are, are going to be, I think, given some consideration. I think, you know, the staff is, has, I, I sense your frustration with going back and forth with the staff and seven pages of comments and the like, but they're very, they're, they're very good professionals that, you know, you can, you can get some good information from. And I think I've said too much, but I, I just, I just want to try to diffuse the, the tension. I'm just feeling a lot of tension, and I want to try to get to the bottom of it.
Maybe I can just add one thing, because subtle discussion between Kerry and I, with respect to our lot.
Yep.
Because I was a new player, more or less, involved with the development from the engineering side of things. I picked up and have now helped Kerry on this particular project and to one of the questions about, you know, so the drainage systems that he's now installed and to his point of the amount of economic impact that, that has, putting pipes in the ground and constructing the facilities, in particular, because he just really finished this new pond just this past year. So, that pond, though, is basically a state-of-the-art pond, meets all of the current standards.
How is it meeting treatment, Steve? Because I know it's quantity, but it's also treatment. What kind of treatment?
It's a wet pond, so it's got...
So, the gravelbed, wetland area that the wet pond brings into goes to the gravelbed area.
It's got the depth and length, the width, and all of those standard wet pond criteria for design for the water quality pieces, basically as outlined under chapter 500 and the BMP. So, that said, you know, we had that discussion about what was happening with our current little project and what we were doing for the drive aisles. And we had this discussion, he was explaining to me, his vision about getting away from the traditional, i.e. twenty-four, twenty-six, or twenty-eight foot wide driveways and bigger roads.
But when you do that, you have more land to develop, when you narrow down roadways and driveways. And so, I'm, I'm going to cut my comments short and defer to my colleagues, because I, 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 I don't, I, I take offense at the frustration with the staff, because I think the staff has been very accommodating. And I also recognize that when you narrow down your streets and you narrow down parking, that gives you more area to develop.
Yeah, it wasn't so intense at all.
I understood.
To slow down speed. And I'm not, and I'm not, I'm not mad at staff by any means, but what I kind of got from the comments was, you're asking us to show us how this is incorporated into Eastern Village, and we're showing it to you, but then you're saying, well, it just seems to me that it's got to remain kind of one way. And with the, with the comments that I got back, if we go and we do this differently than what Eastern Village is like, then we're not in keeping with the Eastern Village kind of tradition, if you will. The roads are...
I'd like to, I'd like to, I hate to interrupt, but I, you know, we've been on this topic now for about an hour, and I think we need to sort of move on. And I could, I completely understand what you're saying. And I, I think the, the staff comments are meant to sort of highlight things for the board to discuss, and we can, we can act as, as, as we will within our, within our discretion. And I don't think anyone's trying to say that things have to be one way or another. And we've, we've heard you, and I think we've, we've registered and acknowledged that. And I just want to make sure that we can move on so that we can continue to have a constructive conversation, because I think sometimes what happens if we get too far into the weeds is that there's sort of a diminishing return, and that's not good for you, it's not good for us. And I do appreciate your, your concerns, though. Are you all set?
Good to be, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ron?
Well, I'm going to defer most of my comments to the present board and future board, since this is my last meeting, so I'll let the present and future board handle most of it. But I do have a couple of questions that concern me for a while. The flow of traffic, is it a two-way or one-way, the way the flow of traffic goes? Two-way? See, I, I have a lot of concern, and I have stated this in the past, and I'll repeat myself right now, about, and then, as was mentioned, then when we have a snowstorm on top of it all, I, I just don't see how it works. I can't put it any plainer than that, as far as the flow of traffic in, in the one going around the other, and even how if there's traffic on the streets, how fire engines are going to be able to get through there in the case of an emergency. So, I just want that before I leave, for the record, is my concern. My second question, which revolves around that, is how many new units are going in this new phase?
Fifty-three.
Is there enough parking spaces allocated for the amount of anticipated occupancy?
We have eighty-two parking spaces.
Okay. And, and my last comment, and Jay had mentioned it earlier, and I, and I haven't heard anything about affordable housing, is that on, on track?
As I understand it, it is. Kerry might be able to speak more to that.
Like I said, I'll defer it to the present and future committees.
Thanks, thanks, Ron. Nick?
Okay. I will try not to belabor any of the points made as far. But I do want to reiterate Cory's initial remarks, which, which are just because a project has been done one way in the past, doesn't mean we don't have the right to reconsider how it's being done now. And I think a case in point here is your parking. I find a big problem with this. As much as your vision for the future is a bunch of smart cars, I'm still required to exit a vehicle with a certain amount of space between me and the next vehicle. And until you find a way to ban pickup trucks, SUVs from 2000 and on, you're going to need more... more space between these parking lot spaces than you currently have. That being said, once you do that, you are gonna find yourself less, you have less parking than what's going to be required of you, given the number of units. So, well, that might be your vision, that we all have smaller cars. What I see here is a problem getting enough parking spaces to correspond with the number of units you'd like to have. So, I think that needs to be a consideration and I think it's, that is something I'd like staff to look at carefully. I, I'll leave it at that. I'm just gonna leave it right there. And it's, unless staff needs something else out of me on a preference anywhere else on this.
Alright. Thank you, Nick. Um, yeah, I mean, I, just sort of picking up on Mr. McGee, I have similar concerns about the, about the parking and I, you know, I absolutely, as I did back when this was first approved, I totally buy into the concepts here. I understand the street alignments, I understand the, the narrow streets, slow speeds, and I completely understand the urban, the new urbanist sort of concept here. And, but this is, you know, we've, we've, there've been, this is dramat, this is already dramatically more dense and everything's sort of shrunk down below what is sort of the standard. And I think there, there comes a point, I'm not sure exactly where the line is, I'm not saying necessarily that seven feet is that point, but there comes a point where there's sort of a tipping point and you start to encounter issues with just basic functionality. And I think part of the tension here, if you will, with some of this stuff is that there's, as laudable as it is to be forward-looking and to sort of try and facilitate this evolution, in the meantime, we do have to be able to function in the present. I guess, one thing I've not heard, and I, and forgive me if I, if I missed it either in any of the submitted materials or previous discussion, is whether the fire department has weighed in on the, the streets in general. I mean, I guess we're not talking about narrowing the streets necessarily, but, but the parking spaces, if there's, whether there's been any discussion about access or circulation as this has evolved. I don't know that there'd be anything that would necessarily trigger that, but that's just something that, that comes to mind. I don't have an issue at all with, per se, with the reducing the lot, the minimum lot size in order to accommodate this unit count. But as, as often happens, it's not so much that that becomes the sticking point as, as the parking. So, I think that's something that needs to be a continued discussion and it may not be the most helpful feedback, but that's kind of where I am on that, as, as Mr. McGee is. I hadn't, hadn't heard any other board members speak to that real specifically, so I don't want to characterize that as unanimous by, by any means. Stormwater, it's, it's been vetted pretty well, you know, for, it is what it is at this point. I appreciate Ms. Saunders' comments on that, but it is, you know, this is, this is a case where the horse has truly left the barn and the infrastructure is there. I think I understand the spirit of, of the question, the line of questioning there, just sort of basically wanting to understand what has been done to date and whether there maybe are any opportunities for, for doing other things going forward. And I think that's perfectly legitimate question. And just sort of looking, looking down my list here. Architecture, as has always been the case, I think looks great. I, you know, again, it's consistent with everything that's been done down there. I agree with Mr. Bealy that everything that's been done to date has been first-rate and it has a great feel down there. And that's one thing that I have generally not worried about at all on this project is architecture and kind of the built environment and the overall design. I'm confident that that will continue to be the case. I, I really like the idea of the post office building. I think that, for all the reasons stated, that makes a lot of sense. It also is consistent with that whole sort of, kind of, community feel. So, obviously, there are some loose ends here. It may not feel like making progress, but I think we are. And I just encourage the applicant and the engineer to continue to work with staff. And obviously, we've got DEP and DOT going on in parallel with this and hopefully that will advance reasonably quickly. Is there anything, Steve, that you need from us or any feedback that, that we've not provided to this point?
No, I, I think we got great feedback here and there's a lot for us to be able to, to address. And I think there's some certainly burden now for us to come back with a good supporting evidence to address the various comments and thoughts that have been brought out here tonight. So, between that and staff and peer review, we'll, we'll hit it dead on and I'm hopeful that we can come back.
I don't think we've closed any doors here. I think we just, you know, just want to continue the conversation and, and continue to own in on it. And I think we've done that in the past on, on these things and it will, we'll get there one way or another.
Right.
Roger, did you have something else?
Yes, if I may, I have a question, one question for Carrie. Do school buses go down into Eastern Village right now?
They don't. There was a temple-
Carrie, sorry, sorry to bring you back up there, but gotta be able to hear you.
No, they don't. They refuse to. We had to provide school bus routes, trash truck routes. We got the original approval. And there were two locations that the school bus was to pick up children and thus far they refused to.
Okay. Thank you. Alright. Well, thanks, everyone. We will move on. Item number eight. Rayon Properties LLC and Dunston Properties LLC request the fourth amended subdivision plan review for US Route 1 and Broad Turn Road, assessors map U-30, lots 16 and 17.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. So let's see, where to begin with this one? So, so the board and the applicant have been working through a number of changes and considerations on this project. Most recently, we've really been focused on sort of the plan development, master plan, if you will, for the two commercial lots. And it, board members who recall, sort of the last time the applicant was before you, I think the question was asked, what's the rush? And I believe the response was, well, I've got a restaurant, I need to get started. And so, board sort of directed the applicant and staff to say, well, okay, that sounds doable, but let's figure out a pathway forward. So this is a first, what I'll call incremental step in the overall picture. And so, I'll focus in on what is, what this ask is. And when we get to our next application, maybe I'll expand it into a little bit more about the overall master plan. But, so as board members will recall, this is the Dunston Crossing. It's a 264 residential unit subdivision with two commercial lots left sort of at the intersection with Route 1. What the request is before you for the fourth amended plan is really focused on two principal elements. One is to amend the phasing plan. Currently, the subdivision is a four-phase subdivision. The applicant's seeking to turn that into a six-phase subdivision. Ostensibly, what that does is sort of reduce the amount of infrastructure in the next phase to build, to make the road connection between what's built out on Broad Turn and to make the connection down through Route 1. Basically makes it more financially viable. I mean, not to speak for the applicant, but that seems to be sort of the driver. And it gets the road work, the ability for the road work to begin, which sort of starts some of that grading around the restaurant area because as we saw at our site visit, the roadway goes right past the big hole where the restaurant is gonna go. So sort of all the grading is associated with that. So that's one request with this. The other is to amend the right-of-way width in between those two commercial lots. Again, as part of the master plan process, we sort of reviewed a general concept for the streetscape, which will include some on-street parking, some traffic calming measures, islands sort of in the middle of the road and those sorts of things. Those are details that we're still working through and we'll see at, at sort of the next phase of development. But this right-of-way width, this amendment amends that right-of-way width, which sort of sets up the lot for the next application we'll be seeing, which is the restaurant. We can, again, talk a bit more about that. The final thing I want to make note on is in the applicant's materials and in staff's comments, there was some discussion around the affordable housing components with this. Again, of the 264 units, the overall subdivision is required to have 10 of those units be affordable units. The applicant's asking to modify, excuse me, how those are developed in, in the site. And actually, the applicant's scheduled to prepare, to have a discussion with our Housing Alliance on this item, this very week. So that's gonna follow this meeting. And so, rather than this board sort of diving into those details before we hear from the folks who have really spent a lot of time on these issues, the board might want to defer that conversation until the next application subdivision amendment, which is gonna be coming before you in the coming weeks or month or what have you, as we know the applicants who are working through that suite of materials. So, I guess that's what I have at the outset.
Alright, thanks, Jay. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Sean Frank, with Sabego Technics with you tonight. Obviously, it's Elliot Chamberlain. And Jay's made a good point. Obviously, this is right now just to amend the Dunston Crossing subdivision, which was, again, if I can just go over here for a moment. I think it's on. We originally had, again, this is pretty much the exact same master plan we had associated with the whole development. The original intent was basically we had three phases of development proposed off in Broad Turn Road, which is obviously the main focus we had at that point in time. With the understanding that, once we came across, we were basically gonna have to build Stewart Drive, if you will, all the way up to Route 1. So, at that point in time, again, 10 years ago, if you will, we basically just called this Phase 4. And Jay certainly made a good point. As part of this, what we really now is just basically work on the development of Stewart Drive itself up to Route 1, providing access to basically 22 units. I believe it's 11 duplexes and 10 house lots, 11 and 12, excuse me, 11, right, so 22 units, the house lots along the road itself and the duplexes. We're showing them the blue now is gonna be Phase 4, excuse me, Phase 5, and the pink, whatever it is, is Phase 6. Again, obviously, from a, an infrastructure standpoint, it's, we have to put up a performance guarantee, that makes a big point and obviously allows us to, to break up like the other traffic impact and those types of things. The other part associated with this is we do have wet ponds that were part of this overall development. One here, one, two, three, and four. And again, just because parts of the road are actually included within that, we're actually gonna have, those ponds will actually be part of the construction of Phase 4. We have been working with DEP in terms of the update of the design associated with that, so they're all up to today's standards in association with the sizing of the wet pond, as well as the outlet control that we had discussed last time. This would also include the crossing of Phillips Brook as part of the Stewart Drive. And again, as part of that update, we're also doing a box culvert rather than the originally approved 42-inch culvert. But again, from this standpoint, basically, this will just allow us to revise the right-of-way of the Stewart Drive and the location of the commercial lots and to further divide the development from a four, four-phase development into six phases. With that, Mr. Chairman, again, I'd conclude my presentation and hopefully between me and Elliot, we can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you. And we will open this one up for public comment if there's anyone out there wants to say anything else. Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to the board. And again, yeah, this is, this is subdivision amendment, so, you know, we don't necessarily get in, need to get into a lot of sort of site, site plan review type, type details. And at least as, as I see this, it's primarily a way of breaking this off into more of a bite-sized, manageable piece so that at least a portion of this project can move forward, presuming the board ultimately approves that. And so that's kind of what this is about. Nick, do you want to start off? Do you have anything?
I don't really have much on this. Quick question though, with the amendment for the right-of-way, it's being reduced to seven feet, is that correct?
I'm sorry, no.
Amend the right-of-way width, is that number two?
Uh, so, let's see, it is amending the right-of-way width, it's going to, in excess of 50 feet. There is a seven-foot wide sidewalk easement on the outside. Maybe that's what you're-
That's what I'm referring to here.
Maybe that's what you're seeing there.
Right, I think, it was basically widening in between the commercials. Remember, they were including the, the proposed parking and those types of things along the street.
You can see why I was confused. I was reading the note here, it's getting late for me. Alright, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Ron?
I'm all set.
Roger?
I'm all set as well.
Robin?
Regarding the phasing plan, I would, as staff said, I would suggest waiting to hear back from the people who are working on it diligently before we make any decision. I would definitely defer to their judgment. Because I can't help myself, the box culvert versus the 42-inch culvert, is it open, open bottom?
Uh, no, it'd actually be a closed bottom with, with the baffles within it and then the, and the material back in.
That's all I have. Good, thank you. Yeah, I, I'm fine with this as well and I agree that it makes sense to hold off on the affordable housing piece until the Housing Alliance has weighed in on that.
And I do, and I didn't, that's why I didn't mention that, just based upon staff's comment as well, because again, Elliot's certainly meeting with them this week. And again, it's, the units will be there, it's just a matter of, you know, how do we accomplish those 10 units when it comes down to it?
Yeah, I said, the affordable housing piece with this and with Eastern Village, which we just talked about, you know, there've been things that have been sort of evolving and have been kind of, not sticking points, but, you know, something that hasn't been quite figured out as we've, as we've gone along and some of that is structural. But I think it's, we're fortunate to have the Housing Alliance now really directly involved in this and, and hopefully providing some good input and guidance on this. We'll be able to do this in a way that, that really works for everyone. So, with that, I will put a motion forward and move to approve the application of Rayon Properties LLC and Dunston Properties LLC for the fourth amended subdivision plan of the Dunston Crossing subdivision represented by Sabego Technics. The proposed amendment modifies the project phasing plan and adjusts the right-of-way width between commercial lots 1 and 2. Based on the review of the application materials, I find that the proposal is consistent with the existing overall subdivision approval and the master plan approval for the commercial lots. All relevant and applicable conditions of the prior subdivision approvals remain in effect. The motion.
Second.
You have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Action unanimous?
Thank you.
On a related note, item number nine. Dunston Properties LLC requests a site plan review for Table &amp; Tap Restaurant, assessors map U-30, lot 16. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you just noted, this is sort of for one component of the master plan, pardon me, that the board approved back, I believe it was, in August of 2015 for the two commercial developments. This is the sort of restaurant piece, if you will, of that overall master plan. So at this point, what the board is asked to do is to review this restaurant plan through the guise of our site plan review ordinance and those standards that apply there too. Just so it's clear, really what, what this commercial lot, this commercial lot 1, is a standing commercial lot that could be developed with a restaurant. We recognize, you know, and we've talked about sort of the larger suite of development that's being considered for this lot, that will ultimately require a more global subdivision approval. But at this point, it's really focused in on allowing, so, so the idea is that this restaurant should, this restaurant review should be able to stand on its own legs in terms of the site plan review standards. the site plan review standards. So that's what the board's being asked to consider. To that end, we've seen this item a number of times. Staff has, you know, some detailed comments, but I'm really just going to focus on some of the highlighted issues. One, I just want to make note of, last time we saw this, there was an issue with the building meeting height requirements. We've, the applicants addressed that, so the board, the design does meet zoning standards. So if the board's happy with the design and feels that the design meets our design standards and it meets the zoning standards, so that's a critical piece out of the way. The other element that I wanted to just flag, and this is a discussion that we've had sort of ongoing, but I don't believe has been resolved to date, and really looking for the board to sort of answer the question tonight, so to speak, is on the 25-foot buffer to the VR2 district. There's been a bit of discussion around that. I don't know that I need, I'm happy to go into the details of that, but again, the standards typically call for a 25-foot setback between a commercial zone and a residential zone. There are flexible standards that the board can apply through the TVC2 district if you sort of see that there's compelling reason. And so we'd like the board to sort of make a final determination on that this evening. I will note that one of the things that we don't have the answer to tonight that would really impede the board from making a final decision is really understanding the full traffic impacts of the restaurant. The applicant has talked about how the restaurant, I should say, this is where the restaurant and the overall subdivision sort of start to merge again. The applicant's statement in their materials is that, you know, the subdivision is a 264-unit subdivision, of which only a certain percentage is built out. And so that this restaurant traffic will essentially, the amount of undeveloped capacity, I'll say, in the subdivision is equal to or less than, equal to or more than what the restaurant will generate. And that's what we need to sort of understand. The issue there is, and the reason we really need to understand that now, is what those impacts are on that Route 1 and Stewart Drive intersection. And again, that brings us sort of to the more global subdivision approval. But so until the applicant can really give us that fully vetted traffic analysis of understanding what the difference is and which then phases of subdivision will be put on hold until a DOT and traffic permits are issued, we're not ready to sort of take final action. But I do think, you know, those are sort of, I guess those are the sort of the three main highlights, the staff comments, we certainly have some other issues, you know, bike racks and those sorts of things that I think can be readily addressed moving forward. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would turn it back to you at this time.
Thank you, Jay.
Actually, I did, I'm sorry, the other issue, and I'd forgotten, is there are still, I would just want to ask Angela if she could just sort of chime in in terms of the stormwater approaches, because that is something that's outside of my expertise.
All right. Would much rather her speak to it. Please go ahead, Angela.
I have been working back and forth with Sean and Elliot Chamberlain, and as well as Rick Meek is doing the stormwater report for this project and incorporating LID measures onto the site, so they've been graciously accommodating that. However, I was talking with Rick earlier this week, or last week, the calculations are still kind of not there. I think we're all moving in the same direction, but I still need to make sure we function in a way that actually makes sense for installing them. So I think we're getting close and we're heading in the right direction, but I just need some additional, I guess, calculations and things like that to ensure that. And obviously, it's a little more sensitive being in Phillips Brook and the town's putting in a lot of time and effort and money, as well as the state, into Phillips Brook and working on our management plan at the moment. So I just want to, I guess, point out that I think we're getting there. It's just, it's a sensitive thing that we just need to work through the details for.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, turn it over to the applicant's representative.
Thank you. My name is Tom Emery. I'm a main licensed landscape architect with Forside Architects. With me tonight is Elliot Chamberlain, the developer, Mark Burns, the architect and president of Forside Architects, and Frank, who I think you all have met before this evening, Sean Frank. What I'd like to do is, this is a distinct site plan, I'm not going to mention the master plan at all, other than to say I'm not going to mention it, and give you a brief overview of the site layout, which you've all seen through the previously stated word, and then go right to the comments from staff. Just to get everyone oriented, this is oriented very much in the way you've seen the master plan to date. Route 1 would be down on the floor about to the correct scale. And west is up on the sheet. This is Stewart Drive to the right. This is the proposed restaurant. This is parking lot A is described, so circulation is that people coming up Stewart Drive would enter the parking lot in either location. There's accessible spaces located to the west. There's also diagonal parking in front of the restaurant, and there's accessible pathways on both sides of the restaurant. Service for the restaurant is to the rear in the southeast corner. There's a dumpster enclosure at that location, there's a service door, so all of the deliveries would take place there. We have mechanical equipment that's screened behind a six-foot fence in this location, and we have two buried 1,000-gallon propane tanks in this island, and I'll get to the comment there. This parking lot has 61 spaces, of which we need 33 for the restaurant. Additionally, we have eight spaces, I believe it is, out front in Stewart Drive, which we're not even assuming is part of the parking that's being met. The planting you see here is in context to the overall plan, deciduous trees between here and the future parking lots, evergreen trees against the budding residential zone, and in this area, there'd be a large, open, informal playfield, so it'd space some paper birch or river birch fairly far apart there to allow views through. Terms of the restaurant itself, there's ornamental plantings to the front, there are street trees along Stewart Drive and in the sidewalk, or just behind the sidewalk in front of the restaurant, those are flowering trees. And then there are flowering trees in this location, as well as along the back of the restaurant. To the southwest corner of the restaurant is a patio seating area for 16 to 24, depending upon how tightly they're seated. There's open lawn area, and then there's a fire pit, and then there's a informal pavers here and low landscaping around a fence that encloses that space. The goal here is that people can relax during the good season, sit out here in the afternoons and overlook the fields and enjoy the sunsets. With that, I'll get right to the planner comments. The first one was regarding the 75-foot, 25-foot set tack, excuse me. Those spaces are right here, the first seven or eight or nine spaces. And as you saw at the sidewalk, there's a considerable grade change in this location. We're proposing to provide a six-foot fence along that entire length of space, it's about 90 feet long. In addition, we're planting evergreens six feet tall in front of the fence between the parking and the fence, and those would be spaced all along this side. We don't see as much of an issue here because the adjacent use is just informal play area, so there's no real screening proposed at that location. And the encroachment is, it's the incidence of a CAD file, that's really what's created. The original intent was to have it within the 25, not to have it encroach, but after the survey was completed and all of the layout was done, it ended up being about a foot of encroachment. So that's how that came about. The parking lot aisle width, traditionally, we've tried to provide 24 feet with 18-foot spaces. Some of those spaces have grown a little bit, but we'll be sure that for the final plan that we have 24 feet with 18-foot spaces. Some people want to have 18 and a half foot spaces with narrower maneuvering aisles, but typically the spaces will be nine feet wide, 18 feet deep with a 24-foot maneuvering lane. And our roadways typically are between 22 feet and 20 feet for one way, 22 feet, up to 24 feet for two-way circulation. And again, the idea is to minimize the pavement and provide safe and adequate circulation. Bike rack, I think there's sort of an opportunity here, and we're concerned that this will be Elliot's decision per usual, but there's an opportunity to incorporate it with the overall streetscape of Stewart Drive. There's plenty of sidewalk room out there. It's not just something that needs to be specific for a restaurant, it can be something that has community opportunities as well in its site and design. The lighting, there was a concern about, or a statement about, the coordination between the photometric plan and the lighting that's shown on the landscape plan. The intent is that the two do align. What has happened is that one of the light poles had to shift a little bit because of the fence enclosure. There's a comment regarding the two propane tanks, two maple trees, and a light pole in the island. The, we needed to coordinate that further. The propane tanks came after the other elements were located, so we'll come back with that final element coordinated. With the lighting, though, the design intent is, again, it's LED lights, they're period lights, the light poles range from 10 to 12 feet tall, and there are accent lights at the end islands along Stewart Drive that are, that have taller 15-foot poles. And that's because the lights are mounted on brackets, they're not post-hoc lights. Regarding the standard sizes for landscape, I would like to make this compromise with the planning board and of course with Elliot's endorsement. The trees such as red maples and other overstoryed trees, let's call them, two-and-a-half-inch caliper, I think works well. I've tried two-inch caliper for ornamental flowering trees in the past and found one that the choices become very limited because of the size of the tree, and they become extraordinarily expensive. I've had real good luck with one-inch and a half caliper flowering trees, and they establish very successfully at a reasonable cost and being readily available. And with the overstoryed trees, the two-and-a-half caliper in the parking lot and so forth, I think will give you that impact you're looking for with a larger caliper tree. I think that makes a good compromise and something that will allow us to continue to have additional landscaping that we've shown in the overall development. With that, I'll turn it over.
Yeah, thanks. You know, I had to have a few things to say. Because Jay did mention that, obviously, traffic, and we've had spent a lot of time on traffic in terms of associated with the DOT and town staff, and specifically, obviously, you know, regarding the whole master plan in association with the subdivision. And we had provided some initial numbers to staff in association with, you know, the fact that we have a TMP right now in association with the overall subdivision, obviously, those trips aren't coming out to Stewart Drive right now, and, but they are permanent to occur here and that the restaurant would be less than those. What Jay specifically asked for is, like we talked about, is we have now phases 4 and phases 5 that are certainly down the road at some point, and to relate phase 4 and 5, if you will, to what we have for the traffic associated with the proposed restaurant. Excuse me, 5 and 6, I apologize. Phases 5 and 6, and we have done those numbers, and again, obviously, I didn't want to just submit those to Jay at the last minute here on Monday, but the fact that, you know, the traffic associated with 5 and 6, which the applicant agrees will not be constructed, but to having everything else worked out for the whole development is less than the proposed traffic that'll be coming from the restaurant. And again, I will get that directly to Jay and to Bill Gray so that they can take a look at that. In terms of the stormwater management, as I discussed, again, what we have is a couple of large wet ponds, and I do know that we've had these discussions before in terms of the LID associated with this. As you may recall, chloride had been a discussion down through here in trying to minimize, you know, any seepage, if you will, into the groundwater associated with that. So our discussion had been really was more taking the roof runoff and trying to percolate that down into the soils. And to be honest with you, what I was just looking at that was more as a groundwater recharge, more than an actual treatment factor, and maybe that's where the confusion was. And I think that's where the biggest probably coordination is going on right now between Angela and Rick Meek from my office in terms of, you know, the actual treatment associated with the infiltration, or are we just trying to do a recharge associated with that? But again, we'll certainly get her the numbers on that. In terms of the aisle widths, as Tom mentioned a little bit, yeah, I just had taken those specific numbers that had come off from the master plan, and I thought that had been kind of worked out there before, but obviously, whatever those widths need to be, certainly the 24 feet within the parking aisles themselves, we're certainly make sure that those are all 24 feet, and I have actually adjusted everything to make sure those are 24 feet. So with that, Mr. Chairman, do you want to say anything? Mark want to say something about the architecture? I guess we'll do a little.
I guess I'd ask Jay one question. When we talk about the aisle width, we're obviously, in a lot of projects, trying to minimize width of roadways. Obviously, there was a person here tonight who has a project that we have roads as low as 20 feet wide in a residential project. Granted, we don't have parking, that's not between parking aisles. I would ask on the areas that we have parking only on one side, you see at the top of the page, parking up against the end of the building, and then that backs up to the field. Is it really necessary to have 24 feet in those areas?
I guess, so I know the 25-foot standard was referenced in what are in Kern's memo there, as our peer reviewers are looking at the town's standards and just flagging those. So what I would suggest is those town standards are part of our site plan review ordinance. Those standards, the board has the ability to be flexible with, to waive, to reconsider, provided the applicant demonstrate that it's still providing safe access and functionality throughout the site. So I guess I'd sort of turn it back to you to say with your next submission, if you can demonstrate that vehicles can easily and safely get through the site at the width you're proposing, I think the board generally has been in favor of narrowing up where possible, but I don't want to speak for the board, and it looks like Angela has something she wants to say on the issue, so.
You don't want? The other comment, I can think in staff, was actually talking about, oh, it varies, you have 22 and 24-foot wide drive aisles, and the actual comment was about, is there potential for reducing those and being consistent? And then you're actually reducing impervious area. So not necessarily saying you're heading towards 25, but actually looking at, can you consistently be 22 and say, and provide, as Jay is saying, a safe kind of traffic patterns through the site? And then in turn, you're actually reducing impervious. I think that's.
Yeah, and I like, for two reasons, obviously, the width of the pavement, the less cost, and obviously, in this case, where we are up against Phillips Brook, for certainly a very strong second reason, I would like to see 22 feet everywhere. Sean and I maybe have a little disagreement on that, and I think that's more of he's, you know, you have a standard, I think he's trying to find a balance and act between what I'm trying to accomplish and what the ordinance says. But I certainly feel 22 feet between the 18-foot aisles is more than sufficient for somebody to back out, out of an 18-foot spot in a 22-foot lane. Whether you have 22 or 24, on a really busy night at other restaurant, people are going to have to be careful no matter whether they have 22, 24, 25. So I don't think it accomplishes much on the safety factor, and I think in this case, it's a less costly item, and not that that is supposed to be the board's issue, but in this case, where we do have an impaired stream, obviously, any less pavement without reducing safety and can save costs certainly makes sense. As far as the, one other issue, I'll speak maybe for a minute for Mark, so maybe there's not a lot to talk about with the building. The building has only changed in height. We, I guess we're forced to raise the height of the building to We, I guess we're forced to raise the height of the building two feet to meet a magical number. It now meets that. The design of the building has not changed. We still, it's still a mixture of a cement board siding and a vinyl shake at the, or you'll see, two feet below the, the fascia line and on the gable ends of the building. Besides that, nothing has changed. We've kept the dormers. I think there was a comment regarding the dormers as to their purpose. They are strictly architectural on the exterior of the building. They do not come through, you cannot see those, and they will be blackened out. They are a regular window, but they'll be blackened out on the inside, so that you can't see through to the framing or to the sheathing on the inside. If there's any other questions we got in the building, certainly Mark is here to answer them or myself. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Got one more, one last chance for public comment. Still no one. All right, Ron, this is your last item.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. First of all, I want to commend you guys on a great presentation. I mean, it flowed very nicely, and as my last presentation, it's a good way of going out, so I commend you for that. Let me, let me say that, going on the record, for, for some of the board members who are new, we, we have given twenty-two feet many times, so when, in your deliberations, take that into consideration that we, and it has never been, to my knowledge, any problems with that whatsoever. The only comment I'm going to make, other than I think Scalvo can use some good restaurants, is that I'm sorry I won't be around to vote for it in the final analysis, so I wish you well.
Thanks, Ron. Nick?
All right, I pretty much have one question. The fence that you're proposing for the buffer, did you have that on the property line or on the parking lot line? I thought in the packet I read the parking lot line.
Two feet inside parking lot.
It's intended to be two feet in from the property. The standard requires that the fence be located so that it can be maintained, so we've set it two feet away from the property line toward the parking lot.
From the property line, so you're, you're almost on.
It's on our property.
Okay, I, either I misread it, or maybe it was a typo, but I thought I read it in here that it was going to be two feet from the end of the parking lot field, which that concerned me.
No, it's intended to be from the property.
Now I don't have to worry about that, so thank you. That was it. I mean, as far as Jay answering your question, I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed that some of my earlier words about drawing within the lines were not heeded, however, the more I looked at what really happened here, or I suspect what really happened here, is you came in with your plan at fifteen feet away all the way around, and then did it all up, and then all of a sudden, somebody said, I think that's supposed to be twenty-five there, and it ended up catching a parking lot. So I'm not going to hold, let me think it this way, because I'm not going to hold it against you that you weren't intentionally drawing outside of your lines, and that it just happened to be at that spot. I'll also say that in your favor is the elevation difference that you have there. It's an enormous elevation difference, so whether you were at a fifteen-foot setback or a twenty-five, or even a six-foot setback, the, the elevation makes a big, it's its own natural barrier. So I'm okay with your question as to whether or not the buffer, the buffer reduction is okay with me. It is.
And I, too, that has been talked about and thought about and gone over more times than I care to admit, but I think, even driving here tonight, probably my final answer is, I, I'd be willing to let those eight spots go as long as there was some ability down the road, that if we found we were really that tight, that we could at least come back in and ask the board to relook at putting those back in.
Can always be reconsidered.
Yeah. For me personally, I, looking at the situation as to where you are right now, I'm, and especially with that elevation, your efforts with the buffering on top of it, I'm okay with the way the plan sits. But that's me personally. It's a very kind offer of you, maybe other board members would like to take you up on it.
Thanks, it's Roger?
Regarding these, these same parking spaces, I don't recall on the sidewalk, did you indicate whether you had talked to the coffins about, that's, that's the property that's right by the house?
We have not talked to the couple, I don't, were they, I don't think they were there at the sidewalk.
But they were here for the last meeting.
Oh, okay. I, I did not get the opportunity to meet them, so I have not talked to them about, about that encroachment.
And we don't, we haven't heard anything from, from them, Jay, is that correct?
Not that I recall seeing or hearing, the only person who I recall speaking were the Mississauga couple.
Yes, right, yeah.
If I don't recall those, these folks speaking at the last meeting.
If I just may add, Mr. Chairman, they, they were here as a matter of fact, and that was the, the, all the folks we met, and so we did show them the plan, and, and again, was it specific, and did they know exactly whether they were looking in terms of that parking in relation to their property line? I can't say that, but, you know, they, I did show them where their property line was, and where the edge of the pavement was, and that type of stuff, and they did seem generally, I think they were more curious than anything else, to be honest with you.
Now, you mentioned the stockade fence is going to be two feet onto your property.
Yes.
Right there. That's quite a slope there, isn't it?
Yes.
Where would the trees be then? They would be on the restaurant side of the fence?
Correct. Right, only two feet in, there wouldn't be enough room to plant anything between the line and there.
How high are tho, how high are those trees going to get, do you know?
Six feet.
Six feet? They may not even cover the fence there.
Well, you've got an elevation drop there, too.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
I'm sixty-seven years old, so time is, means something probably different to me than to younger people in the audience, but I moved into a house in nineteen eighty-three, and the spruce trees and hemlocks that the neighbors planted along their stockade fence were just wisping over the top of the six-foot stockade fence. Those trees are now thirty feet tall, so planting them at six feet on a steep slope gives them a much better chance of getting established and growing quickly, rather than trying to find something taller, and particularly on a steep slope. So I think this is really a good compromise for a long-term solution that really may not be as much of a problem in three dimension as it appears to be in two dimension.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Robin?
So guess who's going to take you up on your eight parking spot offer? So, let's put that on the table. Largely, you know, I think because of the grade difference, I think that there is just some awkwardness there, kind of a thing, and also, like you're talking about the minimizing the impacts to Phillips Brook, and if you do find that you need those eight spots, as Jay said, come back for reconsideration, and I, I commend you all, too, for the work that you're doing to help out Angela and the town with the Phillips Brook watershed consideration, and the low-impact development stormwater features, so.
That's my goal every day, to help Angela out.
Help Angela out. Me, too. We have something in common. Excellent. Um, thank you guys so much for, for bringing this to town. It's a, I think it's a great idea, and was there anything else that you, that you needed the board to weigh in on, Jay?
You know, that, that was the biggest item. Clearly, I had some other comments in here that I think were pretty minor in nature, so unless the applicant's looking for anything directly, and then I would just ask Angela if she has any, but I would say that's really the most pertinent item for this round, and then I think it sets us up pretty well moving forward, I think.
So, just to clarify then, you know, those, we're talking about those eight parking spots that are inside the twenty-five-foot buffer there, type of.
Right, it's either six, seven, eight. There is a dotted line.
Yep, thank you.
Cutting across down to, from a full eighteen feet all the way down to nothing, and I think it is eight, eight, seven or eight spots that it actually has an impact on.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Almost, thank you, Court.
Thank you. Well, I guess, starting off, piggybacking on that, on that conversation, I think, I think I'd also like to take you up on that, that compromise on, on the eight spots. I agree with, with Nick that, given the grade change and everything, it's, you know, it's not as much of a, sort of a visual issue as it ought to be, but that opportunity is there, I think it, you know, just could, give us a little more peace of mind, and I, I do think the point about further reducing impervious surface is a, is a, is an important one and a valid one, so definitely appreciate that. Also, on that theme of, of reducing impervious surfaces or minimizing them, I'm fine with the smaller parking lot, parking space width. As Ron pointed out, we've done that on, on number of, number of spots in town, and I think it makes sense here. Look forward to seeing the, the traffic analysis. Stormwater, as was, as was mentioned, is moving in the right direction, and appreciate you working with staff on that. On the, I guess I'll be the one to bring up architecture. I'm not, I don't have any concerns, per se. I guess one, I, I was glad that you spoke to the dormers, because my reaction, and it's a, it's a subjective one, admittedly, and it's not a showstopper for me by any means, but my reaction when I, when I saw the, the elevation was, you know, it's kind of, it's trying to look like a house. I don't know if that was sort of the intent, to sort of have it blend into the neighborhood. I guess for me, my personal preference would be to, to, if there's a way to, to have it still, still work aesthetically and functionally, obviously, is to maybe go away from that and have it be more of a, you know, it's a restaurant, maybe something that, that's truly complimentary, and I'm, I'm just generally personally not a big fan of fall stormers and things like that, and I can't speak to what your, you know, what the motivation was there, and, and others may not care one way or the other, but that's just my, my two cents on that, if that's something that's still up in the air for you.
Yeah, we've, I mean, when you're trying to balance out maybe a future look of what I see for Dunston Village as a whole, compared to architects' ideas and designs, compared to what's the, the, in my case, the tenant, who very well may end up owning this building, his wants and needs and costs and look, and it is, you're always riding a fine line. I think we certainly were intending to try to keep more of a residential look, and try to lean away from a, a stronger commercial look, if you will, seeing where it is and being right next to Dunston Crossing, so, and when you take those off, you do tend to end up with a lot of roof on this building, which is not always bad, but it's, probably the first choice is not to end up with a lot of roof, and I think at this point, we're definitely, because of some mechanical equipment and needs, going to a hip roof on the ends are probably out of the question at this point. You know, and certainly Mark can, can lend more comment, but I, I think we've pretty, pretty close nailed it to all the different ideas, and believe me, this is, you know, this is round number eight, nine, or ten at this point, that when you guys finally see it.
I'd be the last one to want to try to redesign your building for you, but just food for thought.
Yep.
And, yeah, beyond that, I think, I think it's all pretty straightforward, and we'll look forward to seeing you back hopefully soon. Is there anything else you need from us?
I, I did actually, can't remember who asked the question, if there's, so the one, the one thing that would be helpful, and board members just need to speak up if there's a problem, because I think Mr. Emery touched on it in terms of the size of the trees.
Aye.
You know, I certainly trust the landscape architects, you know.
I meant to say, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that.
What would Susan Alga say?
I wouldn't even attempt to guess. But, so unless anyone has concerns, I'm going to assume that the board's good with that, and that's what we'll be seeing moving forward, is that the one-and-a-half inch for flowering trees and two-and-a-half for the overstory, so, thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you.
What's your next question?
We're just going to appoint him to the board.
He's going to give the administrative a report, and I.
Sean, have you missed warning?
Do we have a staff report, Jay?
Uh, let's see, what, what do we have here? So staff report, do just want to note for the board that there is a meeting next week on November the fifteenth at the Pine Point Fire Department, beginning at six-thirty. It's on the East Grand Road reconstruction project, so folks on the board who are interested, and certainly members of the public, we would invite them to attend. That's why I have, Angela, do you have anything? No?
Nope.
All right. All right. Do we have an administrative amendment report?
Nothing to report at this meeting.
Planning board correspondents. I have a couple of things to note. First, I did, I did receive a call in regard to the proposed enterprise park, multi-family development, which we, we sort of very preliminary presentation on to this point, and I referred the caller to our policy to not engage in ex parte communication, basically discussing things outside of meetings with, with the public, and referred her back to staff, and I know she's been in touch with staff, and I just want to try to make sure everyone's working with the same, the same information. And then there were several emails, like fourteen emails and/or letters that were received in connection with Three, Three East Grand Ave, Conroy's, the Conroy's Garage, proposed redevelopment, and I, I won't read off all their names, but I just wanted to state for the record that those, that those have been noted and logged, and everyone has copies of those, and they'll be certainly taken into consideration, and we appreciate the, the feedback on that.
If I could just note on that, that that application is actually on your next agenda, so those will be in your Dropbox folder as well, but.
Which, for the record, is in only two weeks since we bumped this meeting back from, from Halloween night, so it'll be a quicker turnaround this time.
At Thanksgiving.
Any other correspondence?
Yes, I, too, was reached out. I, I wondered, I directed her to Jay and her comments to Jay, and I encouraged her to put them in writing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just also going to note that the board members in your packet, you should have seen also a letter from a Mr. McBride, it was regarding the Pleasant Hill, Cobble Hill Trailer Project you guys approved back in late summer, could have been September, but I feel like it was summertime, but was referring that.
It was back in May.
May, even longer than, my goodness. Anyway, it was referencing a project you had previously proposed up, so, just reference that you should have received copies of that as well.
Thank you. Moving on to planning board comments, just want to thank Ron Mazer.
I have a few comments myself.
For his.
Went out in a blaze of glory.
I'll yield the floor to you and just submit it, Ron, but I just wanted to thank you for, for all your, your service to the board and the town, serving on the, on this board since back in '08, which is a long time, when you go through these meetings and all the prep that's involved with that, and actively participating, and not only on this board, but on the Transportation Committee as well, reporting on that, and it's been a pleasure serving with you, and we, we all really appreciate your time and wish you the best.
Thank you. And following up on that, it's been quite a delight. I've really enjoyed the almost nine years that I've been on the board, and I, I really want to thank the current and past members of the board for their patience, their support, and their education. I honestly believe I had the opportunity to serve on this board and other boards with some excellent, dedicated people who are citizens of this town, and I especially want to thank staff. Staff has been just absolutely great to me, and for all they've done for me, I really can't express my appreciation enough. And as I've stated in the past, and I'll repeat to the citizens of this town, you have the best planning staff in the area, and I just hope everybody will continue to work with them and support them, because I think that what we've accomplished as a board during my tenure has really benefited everybody in this town. I think we've done a hell of a job, and, for the most part, and that's the way I'm walking away from this, is feeling good what we've accomplished, so I want to thank everybody.
Thank you. Any other planning board comments?
I would just like to thank Mr. Mazer for his service as well, and I have one other comment, is, and I know I've asked it before, but we do think about time limits for applicants, and maybe just think about it, something to talk about, because rehashing staff comments in, in front of the, the planning board, I think is a little bit unacceptable. I, I'd rather have the time to look at things and, and not necessarily have somebody come up and.
I did, I appreciate that comment, and I think, as you alluded to, it has been discussed a little bit, and whether it's a, you know, something that's, you know, really explicit, or at least, you know, I think staff generally makes the. explicit, or at least, you know, I think staff generally makes the, makes the effort to try and establish expectations with applicants, so they kind of know not only how prepared they need to be, but, you know, how to be most efficient with their presentations, and sometimes there are valid reasons to walk through comments to, to let us know how they've responded to certain things, but it's not necessarily always.
I agree, and I have done a little outreach to other communities, and there are some other communities who do have time limits on applicant presentations, so, just thought, food for thought. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I want to say thank you to Ron Mazer for serving. This, this board is definitely not going to be the same without you, and I, I've appreciated it all the time, and I thank you for getting me involved. You were the, you were the fisherman on that trip, so, thank you again, and it's, it's really been a pleasure serving with you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Ron. We will have two new members joining us for our next meeting, have been approved by the council, so we'll have a full board, one taking Ron's seat and another one taking the seat that had Mike Woods, so we'll look forward to that. Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you all, and I will move to adjourn.
Second.
One favor. Thank you.
Okay, adjourn.